On your end? Okay, we can begin our meeting. Sorry everybody to be a little late. Board of Selectmen meeting for August 22, I think it is, 2023. And we are recording the meeting. And I'm sorry, I'm just joining the Zoom apparently.
Recording in progress.
I have to get rid of my audio. Sorry. I'm rejoining. Swell. I got promoted as a panelist.
Recording in progress.
Speaker down to zero. Okay, okay, I should be good now. Okay. Sorry to be a little late. We had an executive session which we just finished and then we had a little bit of Zoom issues. So we are recording this and we also want to take a moment to appreciate our troops that are serving around the world. Thank you. And we're starting today with a happy event. It's one of the nice things about select boards. We get to do happy events every once in a while. We're recognizing individuals for their dedication to the town of Medfield. Tracy Klink, five-year anniversary on June 26. And James Nicholson, 10-year anniversary on July 1. So Tracy and James.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
And we actually have suitable for framing certificates presented by your town.
Yeah, quick photo. Photo off.
Congratulations. Thank you guys so much.
Have we got a photobomb from the back?
Yeah, photobomb.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So by accepting the certificate, you agree to another 10 years and another five years?
Plus you have to sit through at least one long select board meeting. You could kill two birds with one stone tonight if you were now considering.
James, we appreciate you going right back to work. See ya. Our next appointment is with the chief to request a vote to sign the request for mutual aid assistance for the Foxborough Police Department. For details at Gillette Stadium. Chief, thank you for coming.
Good evening. How are you? So we do provide some detailed assistance to Gillette Stadium. This is something that the board had approved a while ago, although truthfully, I don't know that any of our officers other than the deputy has actually gone over to work in detail. Foxborough has created a request for mutual aid assistance to enter into an agreement. I am going to let Mark Sorrell address any of the legal questions you might have because I just read it like a common folk. So I don't know if you have questions specific to the agreement?
I haven't seen it.
Well, this is what was in the info packet tonight, yes, in the highlight. Okay.
So just for the record, you'll note what high regard we have our town council, who basically says you can handle legal questions. I haven't seen the document. Here it is. Now you have it. So you can do that. This is good.
My understanding is an agreement basically outlining that we're responsible for equipment when we operate it, that if we do get injured on the detail, that they have the insurance to cover any injuries that take place. It's a pretty standard mutual aid agreement, but I think the coverage is to protect the towns is a little bit better. They did also provide their insurance documents, which is cabot insurance.
Not to correct you, but it's not a standard agreement, but it actually is a pretty good agreement on a quick reading. Particularly, the requesting party, which is Foxborough, agrees to identify and hold us high when anything happens while our people are over there, which is significant that they're offering that. So I watch it as a fairly simple, straightforward document.
This is why you did all those years of school.
On your end? Okay, we can begin our meeting. Sorry, everybody, to be a little late. Board of Selectmen Meeting for August 22, I think it is, 2023. And we are recording the meeting. And... I'm sorry, I'm just joining the Zoom, apparently.
Recording in progress.
I have to get rid of my... Have to get rid of my audio. Sorry. Now I'm rejoining, swell. I got promoted as a panelist.
Recording in progress.
Speaker, down to zero, okay. Okay, I should be good now. Okay. Sorry to be a little late. We had an executive session, which we just finished, and then we had a little bit of Zoom issues. So we are recording this, and we also want to take a moment to appreciate our troops that are serving around the world. Thank you. And we're starting today with a happy event. It's one of the nice things about select boards. We get to do happy events every once in a while. We're recognizing individuals for their dedication to the town of Medfield. Tracy Klink, five-year anniversary on June 26. And James Nicholson, 10-year anniversary on July 1. So Tracy? And James?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And we actually have suitable for framing certificates. Presented by your town.
Photo off.
Congratulations. Thank you guys so much.
Have you got a photo bomb from the back?
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So by accepting the certificate, you agree to another 10 years and another five years?
Plus, you have to sit through at least one long board, select board meeting. You could, you could two, two, two birds, you could kill two birds with one stone tonight if you, now I consider.
James, we appreciate you going right back to work. See ya. Our next appointment is with the chief to request a vote to sign the request for mutual aid assistance for the Foxborough Police Department. For details at Gillette Stadium. Chief, thank you for coming.
Good evening, how are you? So we do provide some detailed assistance to Gillette Stadium. This is something that the board had approved a while ago, although, truthfully, I don't know that any of our officers, other than the deputy, has actually gone over to work a detail. Foxborough has created a request for mutual aid assistance to enter into an agreement. I am gonna let Mark Sorrell address any of the legal questions you might have, because I just read it like a common folk. So I don't know if you have questions specific to the agreement?
I haven't seen it.
Well, this is what was in the info packet tonight, yes, in the highlight, okay.
So just for the record, you'll note what high regard we have our town council, who basically says, "You can handle legal questions. I haven't seen the document, here it is, now you have it, so you can do that." This is good.
My understanding, it is an agreement basically outlining that we're responsible for equipment when we operate it, that if we do get injured on the detail, that they have the insurance to cover any injuries that take place. It's a pretty standard mutual agreed aid agreement, but I think the coverage is to protect the towns is a little bit better. They did also provide their insurance documents, which is cabot insurance.
It's, not to correct you, but it's not a standard agreement, but it actually is a pretty good agreement on a quick reading. Particularly, the requesting party, which is Foxborough, agrees to identify and hold us high when anything happens to all our people over there, which is significant that they're offering that. So I watch it as fairly simple, straightforward document.
This is why you did all those years of school.
Any questions, Gus?
I had one. First off, I'm fine with the agreement, so this is not a decision issue. But I was only, the section that's called Authority and Powers of Sending Party. I was just curious whether the wording of that section, so basically, that's the part that talks about who has authority over the people that are being sent. And I was just curious whether that was...
It's arrest authority, basically to have the police powers out of your jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Need, you need to be party to one of these, because there's an appeals court decision that the legislature has yet to remedy. The decision goes back to the 90s. And so you need to have that agreement in place in order to have arrest powers extraterritorially.
Okay. So, and then my only question was, is this kind of standard for mutual aid? Even, it may not be that it's standard, but it's consistent with...
Yeah, there's all kinds of regional agreements out there. Some of which I have a problem with, but this, like I said, this is pretty simple and to the point.
I came away with it with the impression that if we send somebody, it's not like, if I read it right, it's not like the police officer that we send for mutual aid to Foxborough for a Gillette event comes under the jurisdiction of the Foxborough Police Department. Actually, it sounded like the jurisdiction in terms, supervisory jurisdictions remains with Medfield under you as chief, if I read it right. Is that...
Not as to the operations.
Okay.
So if they go over there, there's a command and control structure that's outlined.
Okay.
It's under Foxborough.
Okay.
Which is a good thing, because it's all about command and control.
Right.
And when you don't have that, you have problems.
Okay.
So we look for something called Unity of Command, I'm sure familiar, term you're familiar with, which is that any unusual occurrence or mass gathering or event that you have, that single line of command that is giving all decisions, as opposed to too many chefs in the kitchen?
Okay.
But this, that was simply just allowing us the arrest powers to act on their behalf.
That's it?
That's it.
Eileen, anything?
Nope, I'm good, comfortable with the agreement.
I'm good with the two. Do we have a motion, then?
A motion to approve the contract for, read it, make it easy, right? Vote to sign the request for mutual aid assistance for the Foxborough Police Department for detail at Gillette Stadium.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, chief.
Christine, do you have a clean copy for signature?
Yes, we have one in the...
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for the following applicants to solicit. Power Home Remodeling, Jacob Cram, Kyle Reinhold, Mitchell Withingham.
Don't forget to open the public hearing.
We're opening the public hearing. And see, nobody's stepping forward.
They, let's see if they are online.
There's a phone number on here, I'm not sure.
Let's see if it matches.
R6.
We can, we can hold that. Why don't we move to Renewal by Anderson?
Okay. Renewal by Anderson, Christopher Joseph Kelly.
Just podium, please.
Thank you for coming, sir. I get your mailings all the time.
I know, I get them too.
Entertaining.
So why don't you tell us exactly what you're looking to do?
So I'm a canvasser for Renewal by Anderson. I go into neighborhoods and I set appointments for in-home consultations for windows and doors. Consultation usually lasts about 60 to 90 minutes. I go into communities and I'm kind of a lazy canvasser. I more or less say, "Hey, are you guys interested in a quote?" If they say no, that's usually it for me. I'm not gonna sit at people's doors and argue with them for 10 minutes. If they want a quote from us, terrific, if not, that's fine. So usually, the way my day starts is I will do either an in-person check-in with the police department, let them know where I'm gonna be. I should bring a copy of my driver's license, my work ID, my vehicle registration. Some police departments prefer doing over the phone, some police departments don't require it at all. My company policy is to check in with the police, one way or another. We do carry liability insurance for if anything happens on my end. We care, I believe it's $2.5 million liability insurance. So it covers anything from slipping, fall in a driveway to if I accidentally break a patio block or something like that.
And what, what period of time are you looking for and what hours of days?
It depends on what the town ordinance is. My typical business hours are 11 to 7, depending on daylight. We do not, not, we do not knock on doors past nightfall. And so 11 to 7, 10 to 6, or in the winter, more like a 10 to 5.
So you put...
And you're saying Monday through Friday?
Yes, Monday through Friday. Occasionally, they do ask us to do Saturday in the event of like rain days during the week to make up the day on Saturday. I don't do that very frequently, so...
And we typically do these for three months at a time.
Three months, like 90 days or so? Yeah, that's pretty, very normal.
Just get the dates, because you had put in for 90 days on the application.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how long the permit lasts for, so...
So when do you want it to start?
As soon as I'm able to.
Like tomorrow?
Be fantastic.
23 August, September, October, so 23 August to 23, till Thanksgiving is kind of what that works out to be.
And then we just ask that you check in with the police department tomorrow morning, and let them know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Gus, any other questions, issues?
You covered it. I had dates and hours is the only thing. Are the hours, I think from our standpoint, you don't probably care whether you start at 10 or 11. And it sounds like you're not gonna go past sunset. So whether sunset somewhere between 6 and 7, so...
I live, I live down in Halifax, so it's kind of a hike. So I, I like to kind of skedaddle out, yeah, get home for dinner and stuff.
So the only thing on the application is you don't reference Saturday and Sunday at all? So do you want to put an asterisk that depending on the weather, you may do Saturday and Sunday?
If you, if you want to bar me from working on weekends, I am more than happy to tell them.
I...
I am more than happy to tell my boss that the town does not allow me to work on weekends.
No, you can.
I will make that sacrifice.
It's just it's not on here, so if it's not on here and you are, and they call on it, then, then it looks like you're violating what you requested. So, so the gentleman that come in the left of the solar will say they'll do Saturday and/or Sunday, but it's minimal hours.
So I think just for the sake of being thorough, we can put, we can add that as well, weekends as well.
That's just to be clear, because it's not on, Saturday's not, he doesn't reference Saturday, but he just made the comment that if it rains, he would, but it's not on the application, so would...
We're gonna bar it Monday to Friday.
If you don't want it, it's okay by me.
Coming up from Halifax, would it be helpful if we also said, "You can't start before 11"?
I mean, those are my typical working hours anyways, so, yeah, whatever makes it easy for you guys.
Monday to Friday, 11 to 7?
Monday to Friday, 11 to 7.
There we go, okay.
All right, so, no, I'm good.
Can we have a motion that I'm fine too?
All right, so we, a motion that we approve the application Renewal by Anderson with Christopher Joseph Kelly.
Second.
Should we close the public hearings?
Well, we may have a few others.
Will we have the other people here or not?
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna close it yet, because it's a, we're due a public hearing for a group of them.
Aye, public hearing, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll wait till the others show up. You're all set.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there the other people here for the other public hearing, Power Home Remodeling?
I don't think they're here yet, so we'll keep that open.
All right, so we'll come back to that, then.
So do we want to close it?
No, we don't want to close it until we, there's a possibility that they did not think we were starting till 7, so we'll, we'll give them a little leeway in that.
So we'll just have to remember to close that before we leave. Our next item is Rob Tetro, Parks and Rec Commissioner, to discuss Disc Golf Course. I'm interested in hearing about the school that he teaches at, the new school in Needham. Needham built a very nice new school for you there, Rob.
It sure did, it's beautiful.
Wish we could do that.
Where the turkey farm was, pardon? Where the turkey farm was? Yes.
Yeah, that's it. Christine, how do you want to handle the slideshow?
I'm pulling up.
Frank is gonna pull it up and put it on there for you.
Okay, I just sent it to you.
In the last hour? Okay, give me one second, then.
No problem.
Hold on, Frank, I have a new version coming to you.
Okay.
I was fascinated, Rob, to find out that disc golf players have three discs.
Oh, it's much more extensive than that.
Oh, well, the, the video said that they had three, so...
Yeah, three, generally, yeah, we'll talk about it. Yeah, generally, three types of discs, driver, mid-range, putters, just like golf clubs. Drivers, wedges, putters. But unlike golf clubs, discs are designed to turn, right, left, and straight. So depending on the shot that you have, you'll pull out a certain disc, so...
Was that right? So there's a turn left and a turn right disc, okay.
Exactly, yeah, so if I'm on a fairway that turns to the left, and I need a driver...
Yeah, so you need more than three, then, okay.
So, you know, a professional disc golfer generally carries a bag of 20 to 25 discs. Perfect. Great. So yeah, my name is Rob Tetro. I live here in town on 12 West Street. I've been a Park and Rec Commissioner for four terms. I took a term off between Jim Schneider resigning and Kevin Ryder being hired. So it hasn't been four consecutive terms, but I've been on the commission for a while. Like you referenced, I teach physical education and wellness at the Sunita Williams School, which is at the site of the Owens Turkey Farm, where it used to be. And I've been teaching in Needham for the past 25 years. I've been a member of the Professional, Professional Disc Golf Associations since 2003. I, when I joined, I was member 22692. Right now, what's the membership up to, Tim? It's in the 250,000s, yeah, so it's, the growth of disc golf has completely exploded, especially through COVID, very similar to pickleball in a way. People found a way to get outdoors, to get recreation. And the disc golf courses, just like golf courses, is a great way to stay socially distanced during that time. So to give you an idea of what disc golf is, I'd like to just play just a short clip of this video. And it'll just kind of give you an idea of the scope and scale of what a disc golf course can look like.
Disc golf is a mixture of traditional golf and ultimate frisbee to create a new type of sport. Instead of a golf ball and a ball, players throw plastic flying discs, sometimes referred to as frisbees, along the course, split up into nine or 18 holes. A typical hole looks like this. The terrain is more vast and varied than a regular golf course, and these obstacles make it challenging to play. The game starts at the first hole. A player will start by throwing the disc within this area. The aim of this first shot is to throw the disc as close to the target as possible. Once they've completed their shots, it's their own turn to be served. And they make the next throw from the spot where their previous disc has landed. The golden rule of disc golf is that you must throw the disc as it lands. You cannot move the disc or be run around it to create a better throw for yourself. Players then alternate throws until all players have thrown their discs into the targets. These targets are usually steel baskets with a chain neck to catch the discs. For all to be complete, the disc must land in chains, put into the basket. If it hits the target about as bad as before, this does discount. The amount of throws it took to hit the target is recorded, and then they move on to the fourth. The game is typically played over nine or 18 holes. The player who releases the most in a few amounts of throws will win. That's basically the interesting thing, but there's a few other rules that you'll need to know before playing golf. For example, it's a rain. The beauty about this golf is that no two holes are exactly alike everywhere in the world. Every disc golf course is different, and each one is designed to make it challenging to play. There are obstacles such as water hazards, trees, and roofs that sometimes require players to curl the disc around obstacles. This makes it an interesting challenge. Discs. A disc golfer, a regular golfer, has different discs that do different things. The most common three are a driver with pointy edges and is used to gain the most amount of distance. A fairway or a range, a balance between accuracy and distance. And a buzzer, which is highly accurate but doesn't travel very far. Disc golfers use a mixture of different discs in order to play the most efficient course. Throws. Disc golfers have different throwing techniques depending on the type of shot required. Some off a distance, some partial range, and some curl the disc around obstacles. One thing's for certain, you cannot throw in front of where the previous disc has landed, doing several results in a one throw penalty. Penalty. A penalty is an extra throw that is added to a score. This is usually awarded if a disc runs out of bounds, plants, water, or anything else that is in the rules. Penalties can be ordered for all sorts of reasons, so make sure that you know the full penalty rules before...
So I just thought that that video could give you a good idea of what a disc golf course can look like. It's generally really kind of put in as where it lies, as nature allows it to be. It's not like a, a regular golf course that is, you know, cut and like manicured in a way. Disc golf courses just kind of exist in nature. If you could just go to the next slide, that'd be great. So I'm just gonna ask Tim Walsh to come up and kind of help me out with the, the next part of the presentation. He, Tim is newly erected, par, elected Park and Recreation Commissioner. He, he also teaches with me in Needham, at Needham High School. He has been a member of the PTJ since...
Registered in 1996.
Yeah, so a little bit longer, he actually introduced me to the sport. Tim's competed at the United States Disc Golf Championships, so he's got a vast amount of knowledge in the area, and we're lucky to have him on the commission. So just talking about disc golf in Massachusetts, there's an app, an app that was developed through COVID called UDisc, which helps provide all of our statistics that we use on course data. When Tim and I first started playing, there were 17 courses in Massachusetts, 17 total courses. Right now, in Massachusetts, there's 93, of which there are 50 18-hole courses, which is generally the preferred style of course to play, very similar to golfers. Most golfers would prefer to play an 18-hole course, and that's very similar to disc golf as well.
That's the image on the, on the left there, those black indicators are nature figures of baskets that to show where the disc golf courses are throughout Massachusetts.
Yeah, now primarily in Massachusetts, most of the courses are towards the western part of the state, only because really the land values are a lot lower, so it's a little easier to put disc golf courses into those areas. Here in the eastern part of the state where we live, because land is so valuable, it's hard to find land to construct courses. So in the zoomed-in portion, there are really four disc golf course, 18-hole disc golf courses in our area. We have Dacey Fields, which is on park and recreation land in Franklin, Borderland State Park in Easton. What am I missing, Tim?
Normandy Farms is on the campground.
And Normandy Farms is one of the original courses in Massachusetts. It's been here for, gosh, I mean... And then Hart Stuff in Rockland. If we were able to build a course here in Medfield, we would become the closest course to Metro West in Boston, which would be an amazing opportunity for people who live within Boston proper. And if you could just go to the next slide, that'd be great. And actually, I'm just gonna jump down to the last bullet point, just talking about that. The UDisc app has calculated that 80%... The UDisc app has calculated that eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of the people who play disc golf will travel twenty miles or more to, to get around in last year. So if we were able to build a course, it's kind of like that Field of Dreams saying, if you build it, they will come. And, um, you know, through COVID, because the, uh, the increased demand in, uh, being able to play, courses in our area are very crowded. So when you go to Borderland State Park on a weekend, for instance, it is very crowded. You've got families, um, who are out to recreate on the courses. You've got professionals like Tim and I who go to play. So there's a demand for courses in our area. Disc golf is, it's a form of passive recreation. So the beautiful part about disc golf is it can coexist with other user groups that are using, uh, the land. At Borderland, for instance, there are walking trails that go through our course. There's a cross-country, uh, course that goes through. There's even a sledding hill that goes through the seventeenth hole. So user groups can coexist within the, uh, the groups.
One of the things that we've seen too in our history of designing courses is that it does, um, also helps kind of create this, like Rob says here, neighborhood watch element where, um, some parks and areas have, you know, people there that you wouldn't want there. And this, knowing that there's disc golfers out and around, it has, it dissipates, uh, the unwanted people. The invasive species, which is, um, pretty prevalent in some of these unkempt areas, helps kind of maintain to have lots of traffic going through the disc golf course.
Yeah, so for instance, Christine, uh, in my conversations with Christine, she was talking about, you know, they've had to deal with some. So first of all, uh, the piece of property that we're looking for, let me just back up, is the area across from Medfield State Hospital, the sledding hill and beyond, back behind the sledding hill. So Christine was reporting to us when we met that they've had some illegal dumping, uh, problems in that area. But if you put human presence in that area, you'll be able to remediate a lot of the problems that you have with the unsavory things that could be happening at the, at the property. As far as, um, um, like I said, uh, like Tim said, um, when you go in, especially when you walk into the back area, not the sledding hill per se, if you can get back there this time of year, which you probably can't really, it is just overgrown with invasive species. And those invasive species will take down the most mature trees, which we as disc golfers are here to save. So our goal is to remediate that problem by getting rid of those species so that those mature trees can survive and thrive in that area. So we're here to hopefully maintain and beautify a piece of property that really, right now, is, is underutilized. Yeah, I think, I think we can go to the next slide. So what we've done is, uh, we put this out to bid. Katie Walper, our park and recreation director, is, uh, going to fund the, uh, money to help build the course. And right now, uh, we have a company called Disc Golf Park, who is going to come in and design the course, which is an amazing opportunity in disc golf, especially in Massachusetts, disc golf. Most courses in Massachusetts were kind of built by neighborhood groups that wanted to see a course in their area. So a lot of the courses were not professionally designed. And when you have people, especially like Tim and I, who play a lot, and we go to those courses, you can tell that, that, that they're not professionally designed because they've just kind of been, you know, built with a, kind of a homegrown kind of feel. We have an opportunity to work with a, a professional designer. His name's Avery Jenkins. He's a former world champion. Uh, he's traveled and played over fifteen hundred courses in his lifetime. He's played in forty-nine states, twenty-nine countries. He's been there, he's seen it all, he's done it all. He knows what a quality disc golf course looks like. And in my conversations with Avery and showing them the Google images of the course, he's beyond excited about the opportunity to be, to be able to work with us because he called it the perfect scenario. He called it a six-six-six kind of gift, disc golf course, where you've got an opportunity to have six open holes, which means they're not very wooded, there's not a lot of obstacles in there, which presents quite a challenge with wind and, uh, distance judgment. Then you've got an opportunity to have six lightly wooded, which again presents another challenge. And then you've got an opportunity to have six heavily wooded as you go way back into that property. Most courses in New England are of the heavily wooded, um, um, type of course because that's the land that we are given, uh, to, to build courses at. There is one course, uh, in Massachusetts. It's actually the number-one ranked course in the world. Uh, it's Maple Hill Disc Golf Course in Lester, Massachusetts, which follows this six-six-six pattern. So we are looking to hopefully build a destination kind of course, a course where, uh, novice golfers can come, professional golfers can come. And those golfers will not only play the course, but they'll stay and visit our restaurants, pay for gas in Medfield, um, and, you know, they'll solicit that, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Thank you. Not solicit, uh, patronize the town. So if you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. So what have we done so far to, uh, to kind of build up to the point where we're coming to you? We've tried to identify as many user groups who could help us along in this problem, uh, in this, um, uh, process that we, that we could. We've met with Christine, uh, about who we could and should talk to. We secured our funds through Katie and Park and Rec. The commissioners are, are very excited and on board and would like to see this part of, uh, our recreation program. We met with, uh, the Medfield Conservation Commission to talk about, uh, the concerns about, uh, usage on the site. As part of that, I'm just going to, uh, skip over a little bit, as part of that conversation, you know, because there are some wetlands, uh, that separate, uh, the back part of the field and where McCarthy is, where the, uh, baseball fields are, we'd like to, uh, respect the buffer zones there. So, uh, we've, uh, asked Drew McManus, who's a conservation agent for the town of Mashpee. He's agreed to be our conservation consultant on this pro, uh, on this project if, if we're able to move forward with it. And the nice thing about Drew is not only is he a conservation agent, he's also, he also constructed a disc golf course in Sandwich, Massachusetts, which is very highly rated and has been, uh, receiving rave reviews. So, um, so he's a good person for us to be able to work with. Uh, we met with the Director of Public Works, and, uh, he is, uh, able and willing to help us if and when we need it. And we also talked with Medfield Public Schools because, as I said, uh, we know that the cross-country course, uh, runs through that area. And, um, we are hoping to learn about where the course is run so that we can design around it like they did at Borderland State Park. And then I think it'll, uh, we only have a couple more. So that's the, uh, property that we're, uh, looking at. It's that area, um, next to, um, uh, where the sledding hill is and behind, up to where the railroad tracks are. And if you could just go to the next slide, I just kind of threw together what an eighteen-hole course could look like. This by far is not what it's going to look like because we haven't hired the designer yet. But it's just gives you an idea of how the property could be used. So somebody asked me, I think it was Christine, um, or maybe it was, uh, Mo, asked us about the sledding hill and how that affects the sledding hill. And the, the answer is it doesn't. It, like we said, this is meant to coexist with the property. So I mentioned at Borderland State Park, uh, hole seventeen is actually on the property of the sledding hill there at Borderland. And what happens in the winter is they shut down that hole so that it, uh, allows for sledding during the winter. And then they just create a temporary hole somewhere else out on the course. And that's what we would do if, if we actually had a designed hole on that, uh, property there. Brian Schools, our, uh, field manager for Park and Recreation, is on board with this. He would be, uh, he and his team would help us maintain the property as well as the Medfield Disc Golf Club, which would be really responsible for being the stewards of the course. And then last but not least, I think, is just a possible timeline, and this is by no means set in stone, but, you know, we've spent the past year, uh, speaking with the various stakeholders and user groups, uh, who are in the area. We're coming to you to hopefully, uh, get approval at some point, hopefully by the end of this year because the best time to design and work on designing a disc golf course is really through the winter, when all of the leaves are down and you can actually see the lines that are on the course. So we would like to have Avery come in and work with us through the winter so that we can get the course designed. And then, once the design is approved, begin the construction and installation of the course through the summer and the fall of twenty twenty-four, thus giving us a soft opening of the course in the winter of twenty twenty-four. And once we have, go through that, uh, process, have an official opening in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Like I said, this is just possibles, um, but I'm happy to field any questions if you have any.
Well, that's great. Thank you. That's a lot of information. Thank you so much, Rob. Gus, questions, comments?
Just a couple. First, you didn't cover this, Rob, but one of the things I learned when I went through the, the, because we saw the presentation ahead of time, is that one below par, one under par is a birdie, two under par is an eagle, which everybody would get from golf, but three under par is an albatross.
That's right.
And then that got me to say, is there an albatross in real golf? Because does anybody ever get a ball, you know, hit the ball in the hole three under par? So that was one, uh, just note that I had. On a more serious note, in talking with Christine this afternoon, for those who pay a lot of attention to the state hospital property, because this is passive recreation, this doesn't have any impact on the developable. We have twelve acres south of hospital road that we will be allowed to develop when we figure out what we want to do. The rest of it has to stay open. This does not detract from, if I understand correctly at least, this doesn't have any impact on those twelve acres. So, uh, a concept like this that allows people to do things, it's passive recreation, that has no side impacts on our broader potential for that piece of property, makes a lot of sense for me.
Could I just add to that? Because I think that my take on it would be that if we decide to do something with twelve acres there, that then the, the disc golf course may have to be redesigned.
Yeah, although a lot of that was in the woods and around the perimeter, so you're right. If we had to do it, we'd do it, but.
Which does happen sometimes. It does happen. Some courses need to be redesigned because the municipalities, you know, who knows what's going to happen fifteen years from now? So they decide to do something and, you know, it's kind of just, you, you just learn how to be flexible.
The other totally irreverent thought I had was, you know, I was thinking, oh, golf, disc golf must not have sand traps. Then I started thinking about all the poison ivy that's back there, and it's like, you could make a hazard. You really could. Back to, to serious questions. So it's twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty, I think, for the design and for the procurement of the equipment. I understand Parks and Rec is going to fund it all, but what was not included in that was the install, the actual construction and the installation work. Sounds like DPW can help with some of it, but do you, I'm just curious, do you have? I don't know what the total cost would be likely to be, just, I was just curious.
Yeah, so, so the, actually, the construction of the course is very light, so it's the club that would actually do the installation. The installation of the course is basically the construction of the tee pads, which is something that the club could do. The, uh, the installation of the baskets, which the club can do, and the removal of the underbrush, which the club can do.
Okay.
If there were trees that were too large for us to move and take down, that's where, um, Mo and, um, DPW would step in. But I'll just be clear and say, it's not our goal to remove any trees because that's part of the beauty of disc golf. We want those trees because those are the things that we're trying to navigate, uh, through the course. So we would like to just really see, I mean, we, having lived here in Medfield for a long time and walked that property more times than I could admit, I would just love to see it utilized in a way that could be beautiful for the town.
So I think Katie wants to say something, but Katie, you need to get a microphone so people at home can hear you.
I can move quick. Do you have the microphone? Katie Walper, Director of Parks and Recreation. So we, when I came aboard seven months ago, we also looked at the structure of this. The commission, we allocated up to forty thousand dollars if the project was going to go over, um, when we were looking at our funds. I think this project started before I came here, um, so that was something in the work. So then when we were doing our closeout for the fiscal year, um, we identified the money to go hopefully to this per being approved. Um, and then when talking to Franklin Recreation, um, for us on the standpoint, it's a money, it can be a money revenue maker for us. Uh, there's a lot of disc golf courses right now for recreation. I can only talk for Franklin, um, but they are using this as, um, opportunities for not even just young kids. It's, it literally can be for any age. And so I think that's something, it's not as popular as pickleball, however, it is picking up steam. And so what I'm excited for is passive recreation in Medfield, but also opportunities to grow and make some of that money back, but not having too much because we really want it to be passive recreation. I think sometimes when you go to Borderland, they're overusing because they do tournaments, and then you can't go for fun. So we really just want to be able to create opportunities for our residents and other people to attract, like Rob and Tim said.
Katie, how would you make money out of it? You'd have to have staffing then?
No, so you can do like learn-to-play classes, like learn to do disc golf. So we right now do learn-to-play pickleball. We don't even have courts, but we get to partner with Millis and Medway, but we charge a fee and the fee comes to us. So for disc golf, we can do learn to learn how to play disc golf. Usually, we can find an instructor, they'll charge a certain amount, and then we charge a little bit more to help offset the cost. And so then they offer opportunities that if a piece of the equipment breaks, fortunately, I did a project like this at my previous job, it's actually not that expensive. So it's exciting, like if one of our goals breaks, it's not, it's low maintenance, it's not a lot of room to store to have extra ones. But thankfully, they're not, when they are getting set up, um, it's not that much financially to keep up with.
So you had a disc golf course in Norwood?
We do, but we, um, uh, we got a grant and we just threw it together. And so unfortunately, when I talk to my disc golf friends, it's not a desired course. Um, we are actually, we go through, um, it's actually under construction right now because they're middle school, but it went through, um, the cross-country course because we didn't do a background. And then it was also going through one of our waterways. So yes, it would, could be part of the six-six-six, but when those go into the pond, there's nowhere to get them out, so. And we were only a nine-hole course.
Yeah, it's a nine-hole course. We've, we've taken a look at it. It's not a course that enthusiasts like Tim and I would play. It's, uh, it wasn't put together with a lot of thought, it wasn't really designed very well. It's very similar, um, they built a course, a nine-hole course, uh, behind Blake Middle School. The Physical Education Wellness Staff built that course. We asked if we could be part of the design process, and they said, we're okay. So they went ahead and built the course, which is great. It's just, uh, it could have been better.
So it is there, because that was one of my questions that I.
Yes, they have a nine-hole course there. Um, it's probably the type of course that kids would play. It's, it's very, very, very short.
Yeah, the course would be the equivalent, almost of a miniature golf, what, what miniature golf is to ball golf. That's kind, which is appropriate for the age level.
Sure, of course. Yeah, it provides a purpose for the schools, yeah, to let me, yeah, be clear about that for sure.
What's the range of lengths on the holes?
So it used to be that most courses, uh, needed about an acre for a hole, a, a good quality hole to be built. With the disc technology and the athletes that play now, uh, their throwing styles allow them to gain a lot more distance. But generally, think of, um, a disc golf course in feet rather than yards. So a good par-four course would be four hundred feet, five hundred feet. Uh, a short par-three might be a hundred and fifty to two, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Par-five might be upwards of a thousand feet. And, uh, you know, a, a quality throw would be, you know, two hundred feet, so, yeah.
Anything else, Gus?
Couple, couple more. As a sport, I'm just curious, is it, is this a sport where men and women can compete even up? So it's not really men's league, women's league? Just as a practical matter, does it matter a lot, or is it, competition's usually mixed?
So in tournaments, tournaments are generally are restricted by skill level and age. So, in tournaments, tournaments are generally restricted by skill level and age level. So, when people sign up for tournaments or even league play, they'll sign up in an intermediate, advanced or professional divisions, but they'll also be age restricted as well. Tim and I traveled down to Tennessee in 2021 to compete in the Professional Disc Golf World Masters Championships, which, sorry, Tim, it's for 50, 50-plus. So, thankfully for us, we're not having to compete with the 20-somethings who can throw 1,000 feet plus, but it certainly allows for equity on the golf course.
So, that, that leads to my next question on this. Is there kind of an age where you top out in disc golf and you probably should find something less strenuous to do?
It's really up to your physical fitness, I guess, because, you know, at, at our tournament, Billy May was there, who is in his 80s, 80s, playing professional, at a professional level.
Well, that's why he's so close to the COA. That's part of where my head was going.
Sure.
Just got to walk through that path with all the poison ivy and you can get right on.
All you need is a frisbee.
And then, the only, the last thing I had was just an observation, which may or may not be valid. So, it was just thought, there was a place, I think, in the process where I think the select board is supposed to approve something. Is there, well, I guess the next, somehow I said, shouldn't the approval come after the design? And there was something in the process that had us kind of approving the project, which is easy to do, but the real question, I think, is being on a select board, if we need to be involved at all, which I'm not sure we do, is, once you know what the design is, so you know what's interfering where, that seems to be the time that an approval would make sense for somebody to just verify that it's not interfering.
So, I think, so Rob and I have a meeting, and there are a couple of things. So, the board would need approval to allow Parks and Recreation to use the property. So, that's where that approval process will come in. And then, we're still working on the parking, because you would need to put formal parking in to make this course handicap accessible. And that is the reason why we met with the school department last week. We met with Michael LaFrancesca. As everybody knows, we are consistently looking for, in case anybody has a lot that can fit 40 school buses, I should say 21 school buses and 21 parking spots. We're constantly looking for where to park those school buses, and we have not been able to find a location. We have until March of 2024 to relocate them, so time is running out for us. So, anytime we talk about a course like this where there is the potential for parking, we believe in talking to Michael, there's an opportunity to partner with somebody to pay for it without using the funds of the town. So, we were looking at, could we do a partnership with the, the school department and Parks and Recreation and the board altogether?
That's all. Eileen?
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. And, and you're, this is coming from a former ultimate frisbee champion in the summer of '83, '84, '85 in Medfield.
We would love to see you on the course.
By this time of night, you would have found a ton of people on the old high school football field, and there had to be two women on every team. So, in terms of equity, you had to have a woman on the team. But I actually have a bunch of questions. So, I'll start with, you mentioned that you have a Medfield club. What's the size of your club, just out of curiosity?
It's, uh, Tim and I. No, actually, so, actually, believe it or not, Medfield is the home of some of the best disc golfers in the state. Tim, like I said, has competed at the United States Disc Golf Championships. We've both competed at the Masters Disc Golf Championships. Roger Gagnon is the amateur world champion a few years ago, and Sandy Redd, who lives in Sherburne, but is a member of our team. We play for Team Borderland. Our team travels around New England playing against other courses. And very similar to what you said about your ultimate teams, our team is required to have two women on our team. So, we go, kind of like Ryder Cup-style golf, we go play match play against Maine, New York, Connecticut. So, it's very competitive, as competitive as you want it to be, but...
And the clubs generally form at this stage of development of a course, and we've been, I've been involved in the Buffenfield Dam and Charlotte Mathis.
So, to answer your question seriously, though, we don't have a formal club designed. It's kind of like we need to, like they say, have the course. We can develop the club, and then we can become, you know, 501(c)(1) and move forwards formally as a, as a recognized club.
Okay. And then, when, so the area, and I asked Frank to put this map up, just so everyone can kind of visualize. So, correct me if I'm wrong, and when I look to the right of that map, where I see the baseball fields and where I know that youth lacrosse, that's managed today by Parks and Recreation?
Correct.
Okay. Now, let's go to the left where it's just a little more rustic.
Yeah, from, from, from about this tree line, which is a stone wall here, over to this under, essentially here.
So, that's all town-owned?
Yes.
That's the 12 acres at some point we'd be able to do something with?
Somewhere on there. It's not 12 acres. It's more than 12 acres.
There's about 38 acres, and we have the right to use 12 of it.
Okay. Because when Christine first brought this up to me, these are, these are the things that just came through my head, that we're going to have, if everything stays on track with Trinity, come March of 2024, the main campus on Medfield State Hospital will be fenced off for safety reasons. If you go up there on any given morning, afternoon, evening, there's a lot of people up there. Some just up there walking, some up there walking dogs. My concern is, as that fence goes up, we're going to see a lot of people shift and go to that area. I see it today. Some people just don't want to deal with the state hospital, so they walk in that area. I just sense that that area during the two-year build zone is going to become extremely crowded compared to what we're used to today. So, when, so when you talk about your timeline, it's somewhat concerning to me, because I feel like we need to let the Trinity project get done. We need to see how that shakes out, because then, when you start talking parking, I see what happens when Parks and Rec is hosting lacrosse on a Saturday or soccer on a Saturday. It gets really crowded. Now, if this becomes a destination, which I really would hope it would, get that many more cars in there. I feel like we just need to manage what's happening at State Hospital between now and roughly 2026. And, and in the meantime, I'm not saying we stop a project like this dead in its tracks, but we need to at least manage what's going on across the street, which is monumental, manage what the flow of people now on the other side, abutting the McCarthy Park. And then, look at, would it be possible to consider starting with maybe nine? I know, I know 18 is ideal, but there certainly are a lot of successful nine-hole golf courses around here to at least in, in, instead, start engaging, but I don't know. I, I'm excited for something like this, but I don't know if right now is the exact time, just based on what we have ahead of us across the street. And then, the question I'm not from, I'd love for you to answer too, is when you're playing, are you quadrading off? Like, can someone just walk along with their dog? Or is it, is it, well, we've got a tournament going. You can't really be going in this area. Or is it, the game's going on and, and it doesn't, no one skips a beat?
Like I said, it's, it's coexistence. So, there are times at Borderland where hikers will be coming through the course, and it's just the, you know, the golfers understand that the trails come through the course. So, it's just a pause, let that person come through, and then, then they can safely throw. Tournaments, a whole different deal, but the course would be heavily signed. The signage would be there to protect and let people know that there's a course here, so that they're aware of flying discs. Because like, like we said, I mean, besides putters, you know, they talk about mid-ranges and drivers. They are a little more aerodynamically built. So, there is a safety element there. So, there is a need for signage, which is part of the proposal of the course. The course would have signage to let people know where the holes are, to be aware of flying discs. I don't know, I suppose we could have a discussion about when is the right opportunity to, to move forward with this. I, I would maybe push back a little bit and just say that establishing, establishing the course before a, a ton of user groups shift from the hospital to that area, then, if we try to go into that area after it's shifted there, it might be more problematic, because they've been used to using that property, and now, all of a sudden, we are looking for something else that we don't have.
I'm just sort of another, we didn't talk about this beforehand, as you know. We can't do that, right? So, I have no idea what these guys are thinking, and if they're kind of flushing through what, what's happening with Trinity.
Yeah.
And then...
Happy to have a discussion, by the way.
And then, the, the app is, are you reserving? So, you know, like, like pickleball, if you're Kingsbury, you're reserving it. If you go over to Millis, you go, and then it's polite, you know, you play your game, you rotate off. How does it work if, if we're going to have people from potentially all around the state, all around New England, coming in?
It's a public course, so the, these public courses, like Borderland State Park, is just show up and play. So, you go to the first hole, and if there's a group there, two groups there waiting to go, then you become the third person in line. So, it's kind of a first come, first serve. There are private courses, like the one I mentioned, Maple Hill Disc Golf in Leicester, where they have reserved tee times, but they could do that because they're a private course. We're going to be a public course, open to the public, so you show up with your ultimate lid, and you can go play right off hole one, once, once it's open and clear.
Okay.
Now, that's different from, like, let's just say that we wanted to run a tournament. We would reserve the course for the day, let the public know a month in advance that, hey, on Saturday, August 21st, the course will be closed for an event, which typically happens at a lot of public courses.
Okay. And then, you mentioned that the, the, your club and others that are advocates for this would help install it. And then, the maintenance, which I wouldn't assume, there's not that much, other than the field's being cut. And Katie, your team would be stepping up and doing that?
Yeah, yeah. So, I've talked to Brian.
Microphone time.
Yeah, so we talked to Brian. So, it's basically Brian Schools and I. And with the help of Tim and Rob, Rob and Tim, we feel confident that we can handle it. Like I said, when we look at the whole structure of the course, it's pretty low maintenance. Fortunately for us, Brian Schools' home is McCarthy, so it's a great opportunity for him, because he's in the backyard of it. He's basically stationed out of McCarthy. So, when we talked about what would that look like for you, like, he can walk through. He can take one of his mowers over. So, he feels really confident that he can handle just maintaining it. And then, we talked about like the trees, if they had to get trimmed back, if they had to, because they do get overgrown. That's when we would talk to Mo from DPW and see, but limiting that, because at the end of the day, it is our responsibility. We're the ones proposing it, but that's why Mel, myself and I are Mel. We talked about, should we build in a little bit of a budget, that if things need to be outsourced, because we are a small staff, and then we can look and project, like, hey, yeah, we're going to take $5,000, put it to the side if we need it for the disc golf course, which it could be some years, we could not, but...
Katie, Brian Schools is your employee who does your field maintenance?
Yep. So, he's in charge of the 30 acres.
So, Christine, one of the things I know we've talked about over the last year is trying to even just merge some departments, right? So, if we've got town land, Park Rec on it, this would be a situation where potentially, if, if we were able to manage bringing the groups together.
So, we're trying, we're trying to find the most effective way to manage all of our property. You're going to hear some conversations tonight about some open space. In the open space plan, we identified all the parcels. So, we're looking to find the most efficient way to manage all of that property with the limited tax dollars we have, the limited staff we have. How best to do that? We're actually applying for an efficiency grant through the Commonwealth Compact to take a look at that for us, to figure out the best way to do that.
Okay, all right. All right, and you answered the question, because I do walk my dog through the high school. There are those, would you ever, would they be open? You guys are the experts, right? Now, it's there. It's not used very much, which is kind of a bummer. Have you ever considered approaching them, saying, you know, it sounds like to move them, it's not that difficult, but could you enhance it some to make it more of a challenge for, for the kids? And maybe then have more people use it outside of just the, the middle school kids?
Oh, you mean the high school course?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not sure.
I mean, it would be something to get to, to, between now and when this can come to fruition. But there certainly are trees, and that's, that's got to be somewhat challenging back there. That's...
It is, it's, I don't know how much acreage that is, but there's nine, nine baskets in the ground there that...
It's food for thought. All right. I know this is, I don't want to take up a ton of time. I already have someone to pass it to you.
That's a good idea, I think, Eileen. I like the idea of seeing what you could do there. It was just yesterday when I was reading the open space plan that I discovered that we had a disc golf course there. So, that's everything?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Let me make an observation on that. I think what I see here is sort of a first-class resource, as opposed to, can we fix something that kind of gets shoehorned together? Well, so, we, we should talk about exactly what the major implication, but what I'm getting at is, you guys are coming in with a concept for something that's a first class. This is something that people would drive some distance across the state to get to. This is not something, the, the thing behind Blake is not something that anybody would do that, so.
No, the course behind Blake is primarily used for this, for the physical education classes. And that's fine. It works for them.
Right.
But this, we're talking about building one of the best disc golf courses in the state, which people would travel to, and like I said, would patronize our restaurants.
And I guess that was my point. I think it's important that we not lose sight of that. It's an important part of this.
It would become the closest course to Boston proper, which is huge.
So, rough idea, how many people on a given Saturday, beautiful Saturday, spring, fall, how many people do you think would end up showing up if we're, if it's open sun, sunrise or sunset?
Udisc statistics will say that a course can accommodate through the course of a day, five, up to 550 golfers from, from the time the course opens in the morning to the time the course closes in the day. And that is if you have foursomes going off every single time. Realistically, it won't be that. But on a Saturday, it could be.
Does Borderlands get that type of volume?
Hundred percent.
And same with Dacey. So, like, when I talk to Ryan from Franklin, and I think that's something that does distinguish us from a nine-hole course. There's a lot of nine, so it's kind of oversaturated. So, what people are looking for, and for me specifically from the rec department, is getting opportunities to utilize that space, but also get more programming down there, because it is a great highlight for us. But I think that, that sets us apart. When you have that nine-disc golf course, we did that in my previous position, it's not a desirable thing. So, I think it's two things that we're looking at are different. We're looking at an 18-hole to make it a destination spot, to highlight Medfield, to put us on the map for something else. We are awarded down there for our field, so it's a great highlight to also talk about our field, that there's other opportunities, because what we also can see is that this is an opportunity for us to grow as a department and highlight what we have down there. Not only do we have two softball fields, a multipurpose field, two multipurpose fields, four baseball fields, and now, we also have a passive recreation disc golf course. So, I think that's the reason why two switching off.
Well, and when we spoke earlier today, I mean, I still have the plans at my house when I was head of Park and Rec, where that's where we were going to put a $4.2 million complex at the very top, where you see the, the, kind of the U.E. road. So, that, that's why I'm like, okay, we, we need to think, what, what is best, the best use for that? Between Park and Rec use, between town use. So, I think tonight is fantastic, awesome conversation, good learning.
And actually, when we talked to Avery about the design of the course, we talked about that proposal, because that's something that obviously we would like to see someday. And, and he said, hey, hole one could come around. 18 would finish. The Park and Rec facility becomes your clubhouse, so to say. So, it, it does have the opportunity to coexist with other uses that you want there.
That's it. So, Tim, my first question is, what's your number?
My number?
Yeah.
For ranking?
No, no, no. He was giving his number. It's 22,000. How, what, how low are you?
I'm 22692.
11047. Yeah.
All right, so you're about half of what he's got. Okay. So, given my experience with my invasive species, you guys could spend a lot of time working on invasive species. And that's just a never-ending problem. And I think the, I guess the benefits in the, in the, to the town you've talked about, and control, this is going to be under Park and Rec, is it, Katie?
Yes, I would, yes. I'm looking at, yes.
And, and to that point, this is not care, custody, and control decision. This is authorization to use town property decision.
Correct. Which, you know, is something that Avery needs to know if he's going to commit to coming in to design the course. So, that's why we're coming to you now.
So, I guess we're, just to give you some guidance as to where my head is on this, I, I, it sounds interesting to me. Anything with a frisbee sounds very appealing to me. And so, I, I think that what I would suggest is that you go and, and come back to us with, after you've talked to, after you get this input from all these other groups, or I don't know if you've had them already, but if you can just tell us what, what Mo was saying, what CONCOM's saying, what each group was saying, and, and then, let us know when you're ready for us to make some sort of decision, so.
So far, we've received favorable, favorable feedback from every group that we met with. And Christine, forgive me, because I forget his name, but the acting...
Dave Hartzell.
Thank you. For CONCOM Committee, he actually has experience with disc golf through, I think it was... He actually has experience with disc golf through, I think it was Hudson, right?
I think it's Hudson.
Hudson Public Schools was looking to build a small course, and he's the conservation officer there. So he worked with them on their course, so he's familiar with disc golf. So we had a favorable meeting with them. There was a little bit of concern about the wetlands, which is why we brought in Drew McManus, our conservation agent from Mashpee, so that he can help us make sure that we stay buffered from those, from that wetland area that Tim pointed out, which is really the only area that we just need to be aware of. So, other than that, we have the funding for it. We've had positive conversations with Christine, Mo, the school system. So all we need now is just reassurance that we can go ahead with design in the, this winter.
So I guess what I'm thinking is that this is a use of a lot of town land, and that we need to make sure that we understand whether the rest of the town is bought into this idea of committing this amount of acreage to this use. And I understand that, you know, you could still have dog walkers there, apparently. But, I mean, some people may not feel like they can use the course when people are doing the disc golf there, so I guess that's the only thing that I would think of. Bill, we've got Mr. Masaro and then Mr. Sorrell.
So the microphone is dead, so after all these months.
You should have taken better care of it. We're going to revoke your privileges.
So the first time I ever heard about a use of pickleball up there was when we were looking to buy the property. Tom Cregliano was pushing, not pickleball, excuse me, frisbee. He's calling it frisbee golf.
The only reason they don't call it frisbee golf is because Whammo's got a licensing...
And you don't use the metal pie plates anymore either.
I have some at home.
But Tom Cregliano had been pushing that for a possible use of property. My only question is, my understanding of the 39 acres there is that the town has unrestricted use of 12 acres, but that the other 27 acres or so have an agricultural restriction.
But can be used for passive recreation.
Okay, I just, you're sure about that. I just wanted to point it out, that's all.
We certainly wouldn't want to commit our 12 acres to a disc golf course, because that, we have maybe much higher intensity uses that the town might want to make of those 12 acres.
I was just concerned about that.
That's where I would be.
I mean, I know we have the right to use this, we can use the sledding hill as passive recreation or anything else.
And disc golf, yeah, disc golf counts as passive recreation.
Okay, good, all right, that's fine.
But the parking lot, if we were to construct a parking lot there, which would be necessary, would be part of the 12 acres of development.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Sorrell.
Good luck.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that Medfield Day is coming up, and it might be an opportunity to get some feedback from the community at large and get it out.
Yep.
What's the vehicle for doing that at Medfield Day?
You run a booth, $75.
Do you got, is Park and Rec?
Yeah, well, Park and Rec could talk about it.
So in other words, it's a great idea, but I'm not sure who would actually do that.
We're doing a movie night before we could ask people.
I think it's actually not a bad comment, only because, you know, the one thing about select board meetings I've picked up on is that these do get viewed, and they don't get viewed live tonight. People will watch them on YouTube, especially. There's a couple of volatile topics going on, so people are going to find out did we address it tonight or not during this meeting. So I think over educating, because I'm sure there's going to be people who are going to be dead set against it, right? So best to educate them. I've thoroughly enjoyed hearing about it. I do, representing the town, I am concerned that, to your point a few moments ago, if there's 12 acres there, and we have so little space in this town that we can commercialize and try to do something with, that we have to think that through. I think it's a great idea, so I'm not trying to throw water on it, but I think there's a bigger discussion to be had. So tonight's the starting point to learn about it and then let others come back to us.
I guess as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, maybe it's the sort of thing that we'd want to ask the residents at a town meeting, whether they want to use it in this way or not. I mean, you know, we're sort of the titular heads of the town, but, you know, ideally, the town residents get to decide stuff, so... But you guys have obviously done a lot of work, so thank you.
You're welcome. I guess my final thoughts are, if you don't mind, just entertaining a question is, what else would you like us to do in order for us to be able to move forward with the process? I mean, certainly, I hear your comments about getting out to the public, which we're happy to do. But we are operating with a window, and really, the design work can really only happen in the winter. So are you saying that we do as much publicity about this before we get to the winter, so that we can enter that? Basically, we need to sign a contract with the design company before they can come in to design. So if we don't sign it now, which is fine, then it's just getting pushed off another year. That's all I'm asking.
And I would say, sitting here right now, I think we've got so much going on up there, and there's so many moving parts. I don't see where we need to do anything right across the street. I personally, with the concern for safety, et cetera, with a lot of people redirecting themselves from the Trinity Project, to add a layer of complexity with putting a discourse in... I don't, I just see, I'm delaying it for me for a year, and then knowing it could be there for many, many years thereafter, so be it. But I don't feel the need to rush something before the December 2023, March 2024. Let's just be honest.
And I don't mean to feel like I'm asking you to rush, because we've tried to be as thorough.
Sure.
It's taken years to get to this point. So by no means we are asking you to be rushed.
And I'll be at least a somewhat dissenting voice, at least for the contest. You all recognize that the select board doesn't travel with a single mind. What I think I heard tonight, is everybody likes the concept. I think all three of us like the concept. There's a number of issues that got raised about questions we don't have the answer to right now. One, around the implications for the hospital development and where things go. I would point out, Trinity is committed to making sure that people will continue to have access to the open space around on the hospital site. So for those people who wanted to walk their dog in the quad, that will be fenced off. But the people who want to walk their dog in the quad probably aren't going to want to go walk in the woods south of Hospital Road, because they don't want to do that anyway. So they'll probably walk their dog somewhere else. So I'm not sure the shift in activity is necessarily, and I'm not saying I know. I'm just saying I'm not sure that shift is as bad. As much as anything, I would expect some of the current load on the state hospital will shift somewhere else, just because I don't like the fence, I don't like the construction, and I'm not even sure what I should do now, so... But I'm, we probably got to figure that out. The issue around the development of the 12 acres and the implications of choosing to put a parking lot somewhere that, I don't know, I'll say represents one acre of the 12. Now, whatever we do to develop something, we'd need a parking lot. So it's not automatically that it's a lost asset. It's just that, once you lock your parking lot in, then either you're going to redo everything at some point in the future, and you've probably connected the 12 acres to that parking lot somehow perhaps, or at least six of those acres or something, if you ever do develop it. We haven't, we just haven't had a chance to think through the implications on that. Pete, my own view is, I don't, I can easily be talked out of this if the public comes back and says, Gus, what do you mean you don't have to put it up before a town meeting? But I'm not sure for something like this, that's so passive, so non-interfering, and that offers an additional opportunity for recreation in town. I understand you guys probably want it for the state and the competition. I'm just looking at it as a fun thing for people in this town to do in a way that doesn't require major capital commitment and doesn't interfere with what other people might do, unless we find out, if we had it, that we were wrong about that. I'm not sure you'd have to wait for, I don't know why we would wait for a town meeting to get approval in this case, because I don't think we're legally obligated to do it. And I'm saying this publicly, so that if people out there say, I'm just completely off my rocker on this, they'll have plenty of time to let me know, which I'm sure they will. I'm sensitive to the timing. Just putting it off for a year, because we don't know the answers to a bunch of questions, given that you guys have done a lot of work to put this together. And I can only assume Parks and Rec sees this as something that would be a significant improvement and enhancement to the program. I kind of like when good ideas are out there. I don't like to automatically delay them just because I want to think about it a little bit. So that's, it's only intended as a dissenting argument, not a demanding dissenting argument for why we may be, you know, in terms of where we're at, I think that's kind of where we're at. The one thing that I think is valuable, goes back to Mark's comment, that I don't exactly know, and I'll throw this on the collective group here. Finding an opportunity to solicit public reactions. And for me, one of the questions is, do you think it's important we do this sooner rather than later, recognize that there might be some disruption during the construction? Or would you prefer that we wait until the dust settles on north of Hospital Road? Getting that feedback from, and how important is it to you? Getting that feedback from the public, I think, is a good idea. I think it's doable, it's probably doable in an informal way at the Medfield Day without needing a booth. And I'm pretty sure it would be doable one way or the other, let's say, out through the middle of the fall. You probably need to sign a contract if it's starting this year by early November or something like that. It would be easy enough to get feedback, so that if I'm like totally off base here, or if I'm understating the wild enthusiasm in Medfield for this thing, we could get that in enough time to give you an answer for November. I'm just trying to not just sort of have this thing fall flat for a year, because we didn't get to any kind of a path forward. Is that reasonable? Kind of the idea that we know we've got some things we've got to think through around issues and implications. It would be useful if they could get public...
It's why Christine asked me to come to this meeting today in August, because this leaves us the fall to hash out these questions and answers. And, you know, you talked about why we want the course, and that's not entirely true. Selfishly, I live in this community, I plan to live in this community for the next 20-plus years. As a physical education teacher who teaches my students about the sport, I want to bring passive recreation to Medfield. And it's a, especially, you know, we've talked a lot about the lack of recreational needs in town. It's just another avenue, especially to reach a demographic, particularly with our teens, that we can't reach right now in our recreation department, so I just want to bring that to the community, that's all.
That's part of my, I think, enthusiasm. My comment wasn't a slam at you guys.
No, not at all.
It was a recognition of my limited, you know, perspective.
Yeah, so we'd be happy to come back November-ish, December-ish.
What would help me is if you got actually sort of a written statement from the school department, from the Concom, from Mo, or from Christine, you know, all these different groups that you've talked to, to let us have them say specifically, here's what we think and what we're in favor of, and here are any concerns that we have. That would help me.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
I keep hoping, by the way, that you guys will do a mountain biking club for the kids in town, because I think that would be a great thing for Park and Rec to run.
My ability, my ability.
Thanks, thanks.
So our next appointment is with Jerry Potts, Chair of the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. Vote to discuss and request approval of the revised version of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Welcome, Jerry.
That was fun. That was interesting. Good dialogue. Jerry Potts, Seven Curve Street. So I hope you received the email that we forwarded. So on July 6th, we got comments, we got conditional approval for the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And as expected, they did their job and they came back with comments. The Open Space and Recreation Committee met on July 27th. We did have a conversation after getting the letter from the state, with the state. So our comments that are redlined and provided to you came in direction, not just from the letter, but with a conversation that we had with the state. And so if you're looking through that document, basically, there were 10 comments. Comments 1 through 4, 7, and 10 from the state were minimal. They were administrative. We clarified those. Those are, again, and all of these are reflected in red lines on the document you have. Comments for Section 5 have been discussed and have also been addressed in the draft you had. The reason that the committee wanted to come back to each of the responsible boards that were impacted by the Open Space and Recreation comes on Section 6 and Section 8. So what we had done as part of the Open Space and Recreation Plan is, because we had just done a townwide master plan, and we had the select board goals, and we also had from 2019, a survey that was done from the previous Open Space and Recreation Plan. We were told if we went out again with a survey asking all of the same questions, that we would be shot. Metaphorically, not literally, but that at this point in time, that wasn't funny, I'm sorry. That's really not appropriate. But that people were just tired of being asked the same questions and surveys and between all the activities going in in town. So we crafted a new survey based on sort of filling gaps. And then we started with the goals that were set by the Townwide Master Plan and tried to make sure we incorporated them. The mistake we made is we put the entire Townwide Master Plan in there, and the state said, we don't care about these things that are not open space and recreation. So part of the edits were to remove those elements. But we fell very strongly in the discussion with the state that it enhances the Open Space and Recreation Plan to show that the town wanted this, you know, open space and recreation are a core part, came through loud and clear in the Townwide Master Plan. And as you know, the select board goals for the town reflect many, many of the things that are open space and recreation. So what we did is, we pruned out the items that were not related to open space and recreation and just made sure that those were in there. And then, as you see in the red line edits, we went specifically into detail of what the Open Space Recreation Plan goals were and what already existed, because we wanted to show there was consistency and support from the town for those items. And the state told us that that was appropriate, and that's why we took action on that. So that was Section 6. Section 8, they asked us something, which I think, Pete, you asked us, or us, me, when I came previously, which is, how come they're not priorities? And you must have read the state's mind, because they said, we'd like to see priorities on these. And this is why we are coming back to each of the committees, because we didn't feel it was appropriate for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee to tell Park and Rec what their priorities were, or tell Concom, oh, this is number two or three. So what we attempted to do, based on the feedback that we had in the red line version, is to put priorities in rank order. And then we got specific in the Open Space and Recreation elements in a grid. So we have the town goal, we have the specific open space and recreation, we give the priority, we give the timetable, and then we give the responsible parties for it in that section. So the goal, the Section 8, really the major difference there is that we put some numbers behind it. The first priority being, we need money. So, and that seems to be every project in town, so we thought it was responsible to start with, how do we pay for anything that's in there? As you know, one of the recommendations is to explore CPA. And there are a group of very active people who have come out, based on the open forums we've had, who have volunteered to help, and I'll turn to the select board on how you want to handle it, post the Open Space and Recreation Plan, so we don't waste any time to try and get as soon as possible, finger on the pulse on what the town wants, would bear, concerned about when it comes to CPA. So extensive education on it, because we got in the surveys that people, people don't fully understand it, and there've been a lot of changes. And even folks who may be familiar with it from three or four years ago, there've been significant changes for the better, you know, with the current CPA elements. So the rank order that is in the red line plan, you know, we wanted to be specific, that the plan is conditionally approved, we can apply for grants today. We just, until it is officially signed off by the state, we won't get the money. But given the timetable, you know, we're moving very quickly. Our goal was to get the plan to the state in June. We did, and they turned around very quickly. So we're sort of, I hate to say it, a little bit ahead of the game on where we sort of anticipated. So that's generally it on Section 8, pages 101 through 108. That was really the reorganization by prioritization. There have been no changes in the goals, but the rank order is the big element to it. And then, based on that, the action plan that follows, now, you know, there are a couple of edits that go along with that, matching with the new prioritization. They also asked for us to redo some of the maps, and thanks to Maria, and her whiz-bang skill sets with GIS, is it? Yes, the mapping, she not only redid the maps that they asked for, but got crazy and did additional ones, because she just wanted them to look better. And it makes it a much better document. So we addressed those. So we addressed those concerns. They're not in the version you have, but trust us, those maps are gorgeous, and thanks to Maria for doing that. So that's really where we are. We're coming back mostly, it's, again, we're not opening up the entire plan, this plan has been approved by all the committees, but we are asking if the prioritization that we did and the other edits, you know, we're not asking if you think that we addressed what the state is asking. In the red line version, our committee believes we've addressed what the state's asking. What we're asking for is, do you agree on the prioritization? And did we misrepresent either, you know, ownership of something, because we did put who's responsible in that grid for any of the elements? So that, that's my, you know, as quick as I can, for those of you who know me, that's about as concise as I can get. So I open it up to any questions, concerns. Ideally, we would like the select board to validate that the prioritization is correct.
Gus, you have questions and comments?
So given that you answered that question, I'll say that I'm personally unprepared to give you a direct answer to that right now.
Okay.
But if these two are, I'm not going to hold up the process, because I liked what you had to start with, and although that comment ate from the state, I redlined it and said, "This comment makes no sense to me." But your explanation of what the state was asking for, which is, "Don't throw the entire townwide master," I was looking and read it as, "The state doesn't want our Open Space and Recreation Plan to be consistent and mesh with the townwide master plan."
And that's what we talked to them about us.
So that's what had me fired up.
It would have been, our committee would have failed miserably if we came up with 20 new items that had nothing to do with all the work we've done the last three years. To have a plan that we can use for all of our planning across the town.
So if Aileen and Pete have, are satisfied with the prioritization, I will simply give them my proxy for-
Well, and by the way, I am totally fine, because I know you couldn't have had any conversation with this before. You know, we have said, for example, we met with the planning board last night, and they were willing to vote on it, but Theresa James wasn't there, and I can't, who was the other person?
Two brands.
Yeah, and so they had two people that are actually really wicked smart, well, they're all wicked smart. I don't want to, now, all of a sudden, I'm saying other people aren't on the board. You know, the planning board was very supportive of it.
There goes that planning board approval.
I don't want to pick favorite either, but Theresa in particular, because she was involved in the townwide master plan and sitting on the planning board, she wasn't there, and I, you know, I'm not trying to rush any dialogue on this through. I want people to make sure that they feel comfortable with any of this. So we don't have to take a vote tonight. If you'd rather have it on a future meeting with comments, we can do that as well.
If it doesn't matter, and with my apologies for not being prepared to answer the question, if we can defer it and it doesn't matter, I'll ask for the extra time so I can do what I should have done for this meeting.
Yeah, I don't want you to-
Move it to the 12th.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can move it to December 12th.
Yeah, I don't want to force anyone to have to, you know, we're asking for prioritization, and that matters.
Yeah, okay.
You know, there was a question on, for example, the state hospital yesterday is ranked number five. Well, it's not that we don't care about the state hospital, it's just we've, from the time we initiated this, we had this small Trinity thing happen, right? So it changes, you know, that kind of takes it out of the priorities. So we think that the priorities are aligned with that, we think that the timetables for it are aligned. And, you know, there are many specific around the action steps, those really haven't changed, we've just done a better job, I think, with the prioritization of aligning those against the timetable, and that was one of the comments Pete had before. Now, the only thing I will say on it is, we had, we had kept the prioritization out of this, because each of the boards that were responsible for implementing the plan, if they don't know what money they have, you know, it kind of limits. So, for example, disc golf was one of the items that is in the plan. That is a low expense, right, and could meet a lot of the needs, but we really shouldn't say that, "Well, that's number two, right, Park and Rec and the town should have that discussion." It's certainly one of the items, and we started the process tonight. So, you know, I feel like what we're trying to do is give flexibility to the town committees and boards by not forcing the prioritization on it, but number one, money, I thought that was pretty good. I think we kind of nailed that one. You know, kind of proud that we made that, because if, without money, we're not going to be able to do this, and depending on the amount of money, you know, that sort of dictates how many of these things can knock down.
Anything that avoids an Other Pink Puppies and Unicorns Plan is good in my book, and money's the place to start.
We need money to do some of these things. And those are called out. There are recommendations for potential staffing, I mean, again, and that's where the town comes in, and we talked about this with CPA stuff.
The only other comment I make, and this is not just as for the three of us and Christine, is that as probably the, one of the more vocal opponents of the CPA in years past, when I was on the Warren Committee, as I think you've already heard, I'm kind of convinced that it does make sense for the town to take a good look at that. So we don't have to do anything about it right now, but we should probably, somewhere over the fall, start looking at, what does it take to have us, have a group of people take a look at the CPA stuff?
Yes, and Jerry and I have had those conversations about what our next steps would be, and we were, I think, hoping to have this plan done, so that we could then shift gears to that, so we'll-
Although I will say, you know, on September 12th, if we're going to potentially vote on this, there's nothing that says we couldn't form a, and I don't want to put whether it's a committee or a loose affiliation of like-minded people, like whatever you want to define it, it would be good to get that started sooner than later.
Because-
Because the education process of making sure, you know, it's a serious commitment from the town, and as many open forums and meetings as people want, in whatever form or fashion, to make sure, it's a big decision. I think it's a really important decision for the town, and certainly the, you know, I will tell you, out of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, there were a number of people on that committee who want to volunteer to try to help this move ahead as quickly as possible. Even some saying, "Is this something we could have in the spring town meeting?" So, you know, if we're going to need money, get it started. So we may come back, and I would suggest, perhaps it's more than just, "Let's talk about it on the 12th." Can we brainstorm on sort of what an actual next step would be? Because if we try to get this for a town meeting, we would have to really start moving on it. And it is a complex issue, which will take a lot of, you know, it's almost as complicated as disc golf. You know, if you have 22 discs, I mean, my God, that's, I need a nap for that. I have played it, I'm not good, so I support it, but.
That's more like it, golf clubs.
Yep, that's all I got.
It is. It's cheaper, though. Any other questions or-
Do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'll, we'll wait till the 12th. That way we can, I'll be on the same page.
And if there are gaps or things that you, you know, that you need before that meeting, just, you know, please through Christine, just, you know, or send emails to me, and I'll get back, you know, to the Open Space and Recreation. So we come in, making sure that any questions you have, we have answered before, so.
All right, well, thank you. I think that, sort of my thinking on this is that, I'm not quite sure why my thinking about the priorities would be, should supplant yours, your committees, so that I'm happy to defer to what the Open Space Recreation Plan Committee has come up with their prioritization and stuff. I don't, I'm not thinking that I'm going to be shuffling your priorities and things, but, so, that's where, that's where my head is.
Great.
We'll see you on the 12th, then. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right.
Jean Minio, a constant presenter. To discuss requests for one-day beer/wine permit for October 15 from 5:00 to 7:30 for a farm-to-table cheese. I was at that Wasek Cheese Shop site today because of you. Cheese and Chocolate Event at Belfour.
I was done.
It's a very nice-looking website they have, those cheesemongers.
And just to clarify, the request was for Friday, October 13th, not the 15th.
13, okay.
Yeah, Friday, October 13th's in the, on the application. It's just wrong on our notes here.
Yeah, all right.
We haven't had to do this before, so do you need more information than the application?
Yeah, why don't you just tell the town what it's all about?
So it'll be a fundraising event for the Belfour Art Center. Early evening, it'll be a ticketed event. It'll be catered and professional bartending service hired for the event.
And you'll be, you'll be shifting, so if I'm not mistaken, Buffalo Tom is early September, and that'll be on the left side, on the larger field. But this event will be where you've been holding the Wednesday and Thursday night concerts?
Correct.
Okay. And at that time of the year, if it's October, the sun will be unfortunately starting to set. You're going to have lighting and everything up there?
We have portable lights that are rechargeable, that are LEDs that we use now. Sometimes it's getting dark, even now, when we finish our events at 8:00, so we have that. And we would like to have, be able to have people park in our lot that's adjacent to that parcel, so that it's easier for them to leave.
People that are supporting it, but not attendees?
Or no attendees.
How many people are you anticipating at this event, roughly?
I think we'll be lucky to get 100.
And my only concern with that is, and I have to double-check how well-lit those streets are, if people are going to be driving on the roads that are kind of narrow and-
To exit, you mean?
Say that one more time.
To exit the property?
Yeah, if you're, I'm looking at the map here, if they're going to be parking what, right, oh, we don't have it up there. Where, in the, in the final form of this, where you'll have your dedicated lot, just, it's kind of narrow, and it's going to be dark, not everyone's going to fit in there, because there's not 100 parking spaces, which means some people are going to be walking. Just a little concern.
But it'll be couples and friends, so you won't see 100 individuals coming.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
No rain date?
No rain date.
Optimism, that's good.
We're done with rain, Gus.
And then I had a very minor thing, and this is probably from Mark. This is just my mind going down into the weeds. The Certificate of Liability Insurance clearly identifies the town of Medfield as a certificate holder, so the Certificate of Liability looks fine to me, but I looked at the second page, which is Additional Insured's Licker License Holder, and it had a totally confusing list at the bottom, where it said, "The license holder for the insured location, but only for acts within the scope of their duties related to the conduct of your business. However, none of these license holders are an insured for injury, property damage to property," and there was a term here, where is it? It talked about, I was trying to find the town in the second page.
It should be on the first page.
It's on the first page, very clear.
It said certificate holder, it should actually say, "I'm an additional insured."
The first page is great, the second page's wording was so confusing that I, it basically caught my attention. And who, it says, "Section 2, who is an insured?" And then it says, "Is amended by the addition of the following, the license holder for the insured location, but only for acts." Hold on, give me one second here, because it was, "To you, to your partners or members if you are," and I guess, "to you, your partners or members if you are a partnership or joint venture, or to your members if you are a limited liability company." So I said, "Well, that doesn't apply to us." And then, "For which there is any obligation to share damages with or repay someone else who must pay damages because of the injury described." It's like, well, that sounds like some sort of overlay insurance over something we already have. You're telling me if this sheet is clear, that the certificate holder here is an additional insured, is the town of Medfield, that's all I need to worry about? Not the wording on the second page?
Yeah, because you've got to remember, insurance follows liability. It has to be legal liability, and that's what the insurance ensures you.
Okay.
With possibly, potentially with deductibles or exceptions. But where, the confusion arises sometimes, and I see this all the time, it simply lists the town at the bottom of the first page-
Yep.
-as the certificate holder, but it needs to also say that they're also an additional insured.
Okay, okay, so I don't want to waste any more of our time, okay? This is good, the second page was what got me confused. Okay, that's it.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
I was interested that it's, the insurer is certain underwriters at Lloyd's, so you had to go to offshore to get the insurance, but. Alcohol's a specialty. Yeah, I bet. Insurance. I bet. So do we have a motion?
All right, so I motion to approve the request for a one-day beer and wine permit for October 13th, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 for a farm-to-table cheese and chocolate event at Belfour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Jean.
Thanks, Jean.
Next, we have Ben Finnegan to discuss 227 North Street and request for potential pedestrian access to Cedar Street. Thank you for coming.
Hello, thank you to the board. My name is Ben Finnegan. Have a short PowerPoint here with some pictures. Just a quick introduction, I have 227 North Street, which is the McCloud, current McCloud property under agreement, and my intention is to build a single-family house for my family on the 5 and 3/4 acre parcel that I can show you up here. We are, one of our, we love the property, and our intent would be to develop a single family, as you can see on the parcel at the bottom there, that's labeled Lot 2. It's 5 and 3/4 acres. The driveway would be off the existing shared driveway currently off of North Street. Our major concern in looking at the property for our family was just pedestrian access, and we have seven children. They go to Catholic schools, one of them being right here in Montrose. The, one of the big pieces of, that drew us to this property, for many reasons, but was the ability to walk to the center, walk to Montrose School, and our concern was around walkability on North Street. So when we saw the potential here, what that yellow arrow is pointing to of what would be called a paper street, we were excited about the possibility of connecting through the form of a pathway, so that walking and biking could connect directly to Cedar Lane, which is a neighborhood street, and we imagine would be a great place for particularly the children to go out and gain access to the neighborhood, and then furthermore, you know, to the center, could be a nice walking route to, to school. So if you could click to the next slide, this is just a bigger overview of the parcel, and shows the paper street on the Medfield GIS. This, this is a 40-foot wide by about 230 feet long, roughly, and it is what, you know, what I believe is called a paper street. And so the idea would be, we would connect with a pathway approximately four to six feet wide that would allow access for walking and biking to Cedar Lane. I took some existing conditions pictures, just to give an idea of what the current state is. This is from the current property, looking toward Cedar Lane. You can see it's fairly overgrown in terms of, you know, shrubs, there are a number of dead trees and limbs down, so it's definitely impassable right now. But with the exception of cutting the dead trees, clearing some brush, I believe that there would, we could do the pathway with minimal tree disruption by, you know, doing, you know, may have to kind of curve a little bit here and there, and, you know, we wouldn't, that would probably be nice, not looking for anything, you know, dead straight. So, so again, the, if you, next picture shows, there are some dead trees there now, there's three, there's three that are standing, that are, you know, very visibly dead, and then there's, there's some that are on the ground. So there would be, you know, some, some work in removing those, but the idea would, this path would go roughly through the middle of this right-of-way, that's between number five and number seven, Cedar Lane. I've got a couple more pictures, that's just another from the property perspective, and then I think I've got two in there, if you click from the Cedar Lane side. So the right-of-way starts roughly after that tree and goes past where you can see the SUV there. The idea was, it would, it would pop out somewhere in the middle there, and there's one from the other direction, too. So we would, we have that surveyed, obviously make sure that it's, it's going through, through the middle of that, that right-of-way. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I think the, there is some, I appreciate Christine's time in discussing, you know, how this would, you know, how this could practically happen. Obviously- Obviously, we would be willing to do this pathway and this work, but I understand where it's town land, that that, that it may have to be the town and somehow be reimbursed. And I'm open to those thoughts and ideas. I will say that it, this piece is critical for our, for, for our family. The, the safety piece and walking is, is really important. So it's, it's a, it's a big piece of us moving forward with, with the relocation here, which, which we're very excited about to this, to, to 227 North.
Thank you.
So I think, if I could just, Ben was kind enough to meet with me, and I know that I asked him to come out to meet with the neighbors to talk to you all about this as well. In doing some additional research, so this paper street, as we're, as we're calling it, appears on our town maps as Town of Medfield property. This subdivision streets were accepted in 1963 by town meeting. However, this little stub or paper street was not included in that acceptance. However, the lots to either side, their deeds do not include this property. So since 1963, we have acted as if this is Town of Medfield property. However, it was not recorded at the registry as Town of Medfield property. But the town has retained ownership, per se, because we have not allowed anybody else on either side to utilize that property. I know Mark has additional information for you as well on that.
I bet.
So I was asked to look at this. And the, the starting point is that the fact that it shows on Town Assessors Maps from a... Convoyancing standpoint, Pete would know this, doesn't establish anything. As a matter of fact, the assessors' maps have a disclaimer on them, that they're not to be used for title purposes. At any rate, we looked at it, and what I was expecting to see, there's a whole process for acceptance of streets. And I was expecting to see certain things. Christine came up with a town meeting vote, which simply referred to an acceptance plan. That plan was apparently never recorded at the registry. This is land-corded land, the subdivision, that's a whole separate discussion, but it's just a more complex process when it's land-corded land, which is probably why it wasn't followed through. There were some red flags that went up the more I heard about this. Number one, it apparently was commonplace back in the sixties and the seventies, at least in Medfield, to have these stubs created. That's the exception to the rule, number one. Number two, developers historically retain those stubs because it controls ownership to back parcels. As is the case here, with, you've got this big parcel up there. So they don't usually offer them to the town as part of an acceptance. Flip side of that is, if the town's gonna accept roads, they want them completely constructed. So if it's not, that typically is, so it's all consistent with the fact that ultimately, late in the day today, Christine and her staff came up with a missing document that indicated that this, this was accepted. EX, accepted, E X E P T. So the question is, well, what's the status of it? Massachusetts has something called the Derelict Fee Statute, which in this case says that depending what the deed descriptions are on the two abutting properties, that the abutters would own to the middle of the road, the paper road. That's by default. So if the, if the town never accepted it, the original developer never followed through, just let it go, then that is one potential outcome, that the two abutters own to the middle of the road. Frankly, my advice would be, if this is critical to your transaction, that you have your own people, engineer, lawyer, or whatever, look at this and come up with their own determination. If it's not consistent with what you're being told tonight, come back to us.
Okay, any questions, Gus?
Well, let me start with what I think I understand before I even get to questions here. So for our purposes in the discussion tonight, what I think I heard you say, Mark, is we are not actually 100% sure who owns or otherwise controls this particular little paper street. It either is the abutters on either side of it own up to the middle of this paper street, or a developer from the 1960s who probably doesn't think about it, has effectively abandoned it, which I guess would, if I understood you right, the default would then be that it goes to the abutters if that was the case. Or there was an acceptance, or, or something perhaps that would say it's even, I guess the question is, it's not clear to me yet whether this is even a piece of property that's our jurisdiction to rule on, is what I think I'm hearing.
If it were, let's look at the flip side, if it were town-owned, then we could be talking about, first of all, it's, it's, if it were town-owned, it's accessible to the public. If it were a matter of a particular resident or taxpayers wanting to do something in particular, we've worked with those situations before, we've worked with the license for the parking lot next door as an example, that you have authority to give out a license. Anything other than that, like an easement, would have to go to town meeting. But the starting point is that you have to establish that the town owns the parcel. And frankly, I've seen nothing that would establish that we do.
So that's the first superficial answer, is you may be talking to people who don't have the actual ownership of the parcel to be able to do anything. Let's, and that's gonna be sorted out. But for a minute, let's put that aside. Part of me says, this is the rebellious part of me, I suppose, let's say it is town-owned property. As I see it, that property, and the abutters are here, you may have different views, so I understand that. But that piece of property, if a path or trail goes there, is of unique benefit to you alone. You know, there's not, it's not a trail. On the other hand, if there was a piece of property, like the one that we're talking about with going just over the Dover Line up on Junction Street, there's a really nice trail that goes through a bunch of private property there that I've used for years, that I don't know who built it. I think even the cross-country team uses it. So part of me says, so let's, let's say you never came to see us, and let's say you had good, good relationships with your neighbors, and you just said, gee, I'm gonna take down a bunch of the dead wood here, and I'm gonna get rid of a bunch of the stuff, and the abutters are okay with it, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna build a path through this piece of property that's not doing anybody any good, and, because, you know, so my kids can walk to school. The rebel part of me says, I think it's really great the kids walk to school, and, and who would there be out there who would be upset by that? Now, I understand that's not legally sufficient, but there's a piece of me that says, if it really is just a piece of property, and you had just put a pla, path in there, the abutters don't have heartburn with it.
Maybe.
Then, that's, well, maybe they do, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking for you guys.
If, if it, if it's not town-owned, and the immediate abutters either own it outright or have claims, and he can work out an agreement with them, that's...
That's scenario three, and if I were to make the argument, if I were an abutter, I'd say, you know, if you wanted to put this path through to the next road, and now I've got twenty or thirty people walking by for this path, then I'd have one view. If it's just one kid going to Montrose, I might have a different view. So I don't know what the real scenario is. And I'm not sure how big a challenge it is, or whether we actually need to run everything to ground. And I'm guessing if there's some abutters here, you also could tell me how wrong I am about all this. But there's a piece of me that just says, this looks like a trivial issue. Only becomes less trivial, and you may want the legal answer, too, because you're buying the property, and who knows twenty years from now. But this sounds to me like a trivial issue unless there's somebody in the mix who's saying, you've, you've oversimplified it, Gus, and no, it's harder than that, and here's why. So I'll shut up, that's my view, though, is sort of let a sleeping dog lie unless somebody can tell me why that's a dog that shouldn't be allowed to sleep.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Finally?
So I do want to hear from the abutters, but taking your train of thought, the only thing that, that mildly concerns me is, what you want to do is extremely innocent. But you sell your property in twenty years, the person owns it, believes that, that they have the right to it, which I just watched this down the Cape a couple of years ago, where somebody had an easement, and they then thought it was their property, they fenced it off, they bricked it off, they did everything humanly possible to block people to go through, which they had the right to do, in terms of, like, people had the right to walk through, and this person was hell-bent against it. And then even just what we experienced with Deerfield, where everybody moves on, and they believe that what they were told is right, and the paperwork wasn't there. So I support definitely legally flushing this out, but how I hope it flushes out is, if the abutters support literally a very non-intrusive pathway to let your kids get from your piece of property to the street, and it's not gonna be the cut-through for all the other neighbors to now start going up and down in two turns into twenty-two, I hope that, that that's how it can work out. But if I can, unless you want to speak first, can we hear from the abutters?
Oh, yeah, we, we should, yeah. But I'll, I was gonna ask some questions first.
Go ahead, for a fire away.
Are you all set?
I am all set.
So first of all, we, we got a, a plan here with Red, which I assume that you gave us, or someone gave us. And so I'm assuming this is the, the setup houses that have the three, four sale signs out in front of them along the North Street?
Yes.
And so are you buying the whole parcel, or are you just buying one piece of it? I wasn't quite clear.
Yes, I have the three...
Three lots?
Yeah, the three parcels under.
Apparently one single-family house, but it's gonna be three houses eventually?
There, yeah, there is Lot, Lot One, which is the north side, the, and then there's Lot Two, which is skips over, which is the big one we're talking about. And then actually Lot Three, I don't know why they're, they're named that way, but Lot Three, which is the existing farmhouse.
And they're, they're all buildable lots, are they? They're gonna get developed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So let me just tell you where I start on all of this, which is that I really like connections in town. We just built a rail trail, I don't know if you've seen it yet, because I'm not sure if you guys live here yet or not. But, I mean, everybody loves our rail trail, and, and I'm looking for ways to connect, to make connections. Especially to get people, I mean, up, you know, North Street, the, the, I wouldn't like to bicycle along North Street much, or walk along North Street much. And so I'd rather walk through, through something like the rail trail or something like this. But, and, and so for my brain, as a selectword member, it would be, I'm interested in this connection, but I'm more interested in this connection if it goes out to North Street, so that other people in town can use it, so that it has some public benefit. If, if you, if I lived next to that, I may not like that at all, because I may not like anybody walking next to my house. So, I mean, if I lived there, I might want nothing to happen. And so that, you know, so there's, there are different opinions, there are different, different, people have different priorities. So I, I think that we do need to find out legally who, who has the control of the land, but that's just where my, I mean, my brain is just there. I, I don't know that I would, 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 if the town did have control of it, and the neighbors said they didn't want it, I'm not sure that I would allow anybody to use it, if I, if I had some sort of discretion over that. So I'm just, that's just my random thoughts on it. But were there neighbors that wanted to talk about this?
Where are the abutters?
The abutters.
One, one of the abutters, on one side.
Yeah, did you want to address this?
I need, I just need you to use the podium, because they can't hear you at home.
Thank you, guys, for coming. So are you on one side of the, the...
We're on the right-hand side, as you're looking at that.
We're at, we're at five.
You're on Cedar Lane, then?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the first thing that, because when I first heard about this, you know, I was very opposed to it, okay? Someone walking through basically, you know, my backyard, and, and then my, the abutter on the other side, you know, said, "No way is this gonna happen." So, you know, I called and spoke with Ken this morning. And, I mean, I think the first thing we have to do is find out who owns the property. You know, if we own the property, or half of the property, because it was abandoned, whatever, I think then we can, you know, go from there and discuss, you know, what we should do, you know, whether the, the walkway should be, you know, six feet, or four feet, or two feet, you know, whatever they need. And maybe they don't even need, you know, a lot of, you know, space to get through, because I think you had mentioned that you were looking to tie into the sewer and water. And that would, you know, possibly the easiest thing to do would be to come down that way. So, you know, maybe it was a, you know, something that could be done in that way, as far as, you know, creating a, you know, a small path through the property. But at this point, you know, I think we don't have any choice but to basically, you know, see who owns it first. And then, you know, if you own, the town owns it, then, you know, we can work with you, or Ben can work with you, on, you know, what should be done. And if, if anything is done, I mean, we, I think it needs to be in writing in terms of how it's gonna function, because I've, I've had three houses built for myself, and a lot of times, if you go by word of mouth, you know, it doesn't happen that way. So, so everything would have to be documented, you know, so...
Well, and if you guys own it, you, you know, you may well be entitled to compensation for granting a right-of-way across it, so...
Yeah, I mean, so those are things that we have to consider.
Yep, absolutely.
And, and the other thing is, is who is gonna maintain this? So whoever owns it, the town, the abutters, who's gonna maintain it? I mean, it's, it's nice, it's gonna be initially cleared or whatever, but, you know, what if a tree comes down? Or, you know, what if, you know, something on the property needs to be fixed? Who, who's responsible for that? And who is gonna do the work on this? You know, is it gonna be the town? And if the town does it, you know, we would like to, you know, have an input as to how it's gonna all pan out. You know, is it gonna be, you know, a cement, you know? You know, Ben had said gravel or something like that, you know, but it should be in keeping with, you know, the, the neighborhood. You know, we, we all take care of our properties there, we have pride of ownership, and we don't want it to look ugly.
Matter, matter of fact, we lived in Dover for seventeen years, you know, we had a house there, a fairly big house. You know, all the kids moved out, so, you know, we decided, yeah. So we decided, rather than having a big house, we'd just, you know, get something smaller. So we moved, Medfield's a good town, my brother, you know, is an attorney, he lives at Prentis, he's retired, but he lives at Prentis Place. His daughter lives on Wheeler Road, I think it is.
Willer, right.
Wheeler Road, yeah, as well, so it's a nice town, you know, it's a nice town. We haven't, and one of the reasons we bought the house was because of the backyard and the privacy and so on. So we really would like to keep that as well.
Could I just throw a quick question in around expectation? I know you had mentioned maybe four feet, but in my head, I'm saying, this is a path, just like any other path through the woods. So I, speaking as one voice, if this is town property, I can assure you, I won't be in favor of the town putting money into building a formal walkway that benefits one owner who wants to get out to a certain, if it's a path, it's just like any other path through the woods, it sort of maintains itself until nobody wants to use it.
Right.
So just, that's simply an editorial comment in this whole process, to make sure I understand expectations here.
It's not likely the town's gonna be maintaining a path like this.
Yeah, and I understand where Ben is coming from, you know, I'm one of nine that grew up on Beacon Street in Chestnut Hill, and the traffic there was very similar to North Street, you know, so, but, you know, we were driven to school. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, you know, I think...
Yeah, as long as we're in the loop, I mean, we're, we're happy to, you know, work with, with Ben and you, and, you know, once we figure out what...
What it is that needs to be done, and who owns what, you know, type thing.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, of course.
So it sounds like, and this is why I want to make sure I'm hearing it correctly, if it plays out that the, that you own it, right, so you and your, is the other neighbor here, or no?
I know, she actually works in your treasury group, her first name is Dolores.
Oh, okay.
She can't come in because she's on medical leave.
Got, okay, got it. So let's just say she doesn't want it, but you do want it. In theory, you could still let it go through your piece of property, right? It doesn't have to be joint, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not measuring the distance correctly, that if they, if it went along your stretch, as long as your side, it doesn't matter what the other neighbor thinks, or if both neighbors agree, you could put it right down the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be preferable, I would, I would think, you know, rather than having us bearing the, the brunt, so to speak.
So I, I would be remiss in pointing out, and I promised the principal assessor that once we determine the ownership, and if it is determined to be the abutters to the middle, that they will be reassessing the property for that additional space. So just, I just wanted you to know, I didn't want any surprises. We did look up your deed to make sure, I believe you either refinanced recently, or did something, your deed is online, and your, your deed is currently to what is on there, not including that paper street. So I just wanted you to know, you haven't been assessed for it up until now.
I mean, if she doesn't, if for some reason she doesn't want to, you know, because you're gonna have to pay tax on that property. If she does not want to pay tax on it, and maybe you can ask this question... you can't ask this question, but would we be able to take that property?
That, I think we have to find out who owns it first.
Yeah, okay.
This turned into a really, really easy situation where Ben came to see me and I said, oh, that's public property, we're all set, and then it has quickly spiraled into wow.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, well, it'll get worked out.
But she made the mistake of dragging the town attorney in.
I believe I pointed that out to a few people today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. How much better do you guys like Medfield than Dover?
I'm, I'm sorry, I have just one clarifying question. Thank you for your time, I don't want to exercise more than necessary. So it sounds like the, the town could be privately owned, in which case, that's just a real estate transaction between me and, and the owners, for terms of an easement. If the town is, so it's either privately owned, or it's owned by the town, which is a possibility. If it is owned by the town, is the process of coming to the select board for approval to construct a pathway like we kind of maybe started off the right way to go, and would that be, would that be kind of?
We'd be doing this again.
Again, so if we find out tomorrow that it is in fact owned by the town, we come back and that's a decision that's made here? Okay.
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And not something that has to go out for town vote at all, just strictly the three of us?
Well.
A utility easement, if we are talking about doing utility easement to water, that's different, and that would have to be accepted by town meeting as an easement.
An easement is an interest in land, and that requires authorization from town meeting. Something called a license, which is, it's technically at will, but as a practical matter, as long as you abide by the terms, so we've, there's been some flexibility in the past to allow things in the right of way for the select board.
Right.
Yeah, there is a clarifying question, so we are on Zoom as well, so we have people watching at home, so there is a clarify, someone would like you to clarify that the intention is for a private path accessible to you and your family only, or is the intention for the other end of the path to end elsewhere and be open to the public?
So the first, I would imagine that it is a private path. I thought about the concept of connecting, I think the issue there is I wouldn't want to encourage crossing of North Street from a safety standpoint, just for the same reason that I, I would like the kids to go the other way. So that's, that was my thought, yeah.
Okay. Thank you guys for coming. Oh, we have something more?
Yes. Hi, I'm Ruth McGary, I live at 74 Pine Street, so I'm, like, my backyard is that neighborhood, but I'm also the Realtor, and I just have a different perspective. So the McLeod family really cares about what happens to the land. Ben was one offer, and he wants to build a single-family house. The other offers on that piece of land were not. And so I think it's really important, having what he wants essentially is access for his kids, and I just, I guess, being from that field and living in the community, I mean, I live right by Shining Valley, people are, you know, we're always walking there. So I, I just, I guess I'm disheartened a little bit, because essentially after this meeting, I'm going to have to, like, this deal is essentially blowing up. And so for me, we have to go, and unfortunately, you guys will probably most likely be here again, but it won't be for a single-family home. So you guys might be upset with wanting a, one family having access to like, making a, a path per se, but it's five acres of land, so a lot of, it has taken two years to try and find somebody who would build a single-family home on that lot. So for me, I thought, and silly me, I thought that putting a path there, not like, forget about the utilities, like, but a path for children to cross, it's what Medfield stands for. What, I mean, why wouldn't we want, and truthfully, when you guys were talking about who's going to maintain, the land is currently, I've been, I have walked the land so many times, because essentially I've showed the property to tons of different developers. To, to have a family living there and wanting to ride a bike or walk, and I understand that that could bring, you know, that's more people walking, but currently, it's just brush and trees, so the maintenance.
And it affords us privacy.
Yeah, and there are quite a bit of animals back there as well, so deer and fox and things like that.
So go ahead.
But I.
But in any case. I just, I guess, it's just for me, the, the goal would be to have the least imprint on the land. We're trying, essentially, yes, Ben happens to be a developer, but he wants to build a single-family home on that lot.
Well, I think what you heard tonight, though, is no matter what, nothing can be decided in the next 24 hours, because things have to be sorted out. If they own it, they have decisions to make. If the town owns it, we have decisions to make, but we just can't stay here tonight, no matter what, we can go ahead and do it, we just can't do that, we legally own the right to do that.
Right. Do you have any idea, because it seems like people, how will we go about finding out? And would there be a timeline?
Well, it's, it's, it's an issue that cries out for an attorney to, to do a title exam and figure it out. The town's records, as related by Christine, are, first of all, the town doesn't, the town has to take affirmative action and follow certain processes to acquire property. In this case, that not only was not done, but this particular paper street, whatever you want to call it, was accepted, E-X-C-E-P-T as opposed to A-C-C. Was, was left out of the public acceptance. So the town, unless you can show some other documents, so you can get an engineer, surveyor, a title examiner, to do a more thorough background check, but even before she found that, we were not finding the positive documentation on record at the registry that we would have expected anyway. Yeah, so it's really not a paper street, it's just a.
It's an orphaned piece of land.
It's an orphaned.
It was an access, it was a potential access for backland development. It's done all the time.
Although the.
Mark, if I put words in your mouth, then what you're saying is based on what you know right now, the town does not own this land, which would then say the implication is that the two abutters own up to the midpoint of the paper. So at least based on what you know right now, this is not the form to talk about this, because we don't own the land to have control over it. It really will boil down to the abutters having their property lines adjusted to the midpoint, or if for whatever reason, one abutter wished that wouldn't happen, because they don't want to change their assessment.
Hypothetically, so the, the derelict fee statute that I refer to is written in a certain way. Hypothetically, a developer might have taken, put in language that exempted rights in that way, because you can put language in.
Okay.
If it's silent, or if it has affirmative language, then by default, you end up only to the middle. If it's exempted, that would be a worst-case scenario, because then that means whoever the original developer was, or his successors, or heirs, or whatever, and you have to go looking for them. So that, that, I wouldn't even think about that right now, let's just assume that it was just by default, it's likely that it's to the two abutters, but you need to review their deeds to make that determination. But that being said, to reiterate what I said at the outset, I have seen nothing, no documentation that would establish that the town owns that piece of land.
The one, the one comment I would say is that the land was conveyed within the past couple of years, and nobody's been paying taxes for it, so, and I understand what you're saying, I'm also an attorney, but I, I know that we can't, we don't know. Obviously, I'm a little frustrated, because I feel like we do have a timeline, and so the contingency is not met. And so we, you know, we also didn't know, because it, so.
Well, I think the thing should be is we should find out as soon as possible who owns it.
I agree.
Or we own it, or the neighbors own it, and we can deal with it from there.
And I think we're trying to be more than reasonable, like you said, from the initial outset of this, we were like dead-set against it. And we have three kids too, I get it, it's a safety issue for their children, we're trying to be.
So I, I need to interrupt you, because the people at home can't hear you when you don't use a microphone, so if you really want to continue, you need to go to a microphone.
Sorry.
Otherwise, we get yelled at on Zoom.
So what I was just trying to say is that from the outset of this, we were dead-set against this, you know, our privacy is important to us, it's why we bought the house, it's why we did all the work on the house. We could have, you know, moved someplace else. But we loved the land. I work in a hospital, when I come home from work, that's where I go, I go to the backyard. So that's my oasis, that's my happy place, that's where I go. So I was upset about it and thought, you know, this isn't going to happen, but we're sympathetic, you know, we have three kids, we lived on Great Plain Ave in Needham, and that's a very busy street. So our next house that we bought was on a cul-de-sac, because we said, that didn't work out so well. So, you know, I'm sympathetic to that, I really am, we're trying to work with you, we're trying to be reasonable about this. So I don't appreciate that comment that, you know, this is, that we're trying to be difficult, because we're not.
No, I, and I hear you, I'm sorry, I, I hope, I don't, I think my frustration came out, but it had nothing to do with.
Because nobody knew about, yeah.
Did we find out about this on Thursday, so?
Please.
Yes, Maria.
I'll be quick, I just want to ask a clarifying question to the Realtor, if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
So you mentioned that you had other offers for this property, and that this was the only single-family home we've seen, given that this is residentially sewn to residential town, and the other only allowed uses are semi-public or institutional or protected by the state. Can I ask what else were people proposing? Just want to make sure it was kind of allowed.
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, people can go for a special permit, I mean, there's, it's a, yes, but I'm saying, he's, he wants to put one house, there were developers who have wanted to put 10 houses back there. You can't, it's not by right, they would have to get a special permit. There was also somebody who wanted to put a riding ring with, you know, in a horse barn, that would bring traffic. There were pros and cons to everything, but there's definite interest to try and subdivide that five acres.
I don't think you can subdivide those five acres.
Not by right, not by right.
Forty B, you could do forty B, so that's what I think she's talking about.
But that's, yeah, that's want to be protective, this is, but not 10 single-family homes or.
Right, right, right.
Okay, just, just want to make sure I.
I don't think you'd have the frontage, and, and like, then you're asking for a special permit, that I don't think we've granted it in other parts of town, so it doesn't become by standard, so, yeah, I think that would be stretching.
Be a comprehensive permit, is what Pete's alluding to.
Yeah.
That's what, that's forty B. You're gonna have, you, up to 200 houses in there, or 200 units. Yeah, but there's no other provision.
Forty B is going to be an issue for us as soon as the state hospital property goes through, and we're at 17, 17% affordable.
Right, until, until then, some developer can come in and put in 200 units.
Yes, I just want to make sure there was, a forty B would technically be allowed there, but not a, a proper subdivision of land, as I just wanted to.
So are you saying that forty B could not go in?
It can, it's exempt from zoning, yes, until we reach a 10%.
I was saying, but the way that the trajectory of this town, when the state hospital property is complete, is we'll be at about 17% affordable, just because of the way the project's lined up.
That should go up to the limit, or?
Yeah, 10% is what we need.
10% is the target, we're going to overshoot it by 7%.
Yeah, okay.
But until we do, we're exposed.
Probably not going to be a major issue.
Yeah, that's not a good place to put the, one of your properties.
No, no.
Thank you, I didn't mean to, I just wanted to clarify that no subdivision.
Thank you, Maria. Did you have a question, sir?
Very quickly. I'm Ed from Blue, six Cedar Lane, right across, like, property right across from the paper road, this is my wife's home, last week.
Are you on North Street, sir?
No, I'm on Cedar.
So you were across from where the suburban was parked?
Yes, and in fact, whatever comes out will open right onto our, right across from our property. Obviously, we're very concerned that there's no road there eventually.
Absolutely.
We don't want headlights coming out and things like that. The only thing I have is clarification, and this has made me more of a Ben, is, when we spoke on Thursday, we talked about having a bike trail for your kids. Now it's a four-to-six-foot wide pedestrian pathway, and it seems to have grown a little bit. So that's, I'm a little concerned about where that might go six months from now, or a year from now, because you wouldn't be putting it in, so I, I get concerned that we have some clarification limits, and I don't know how we would enforce that, that it would just be a pathway for kids. Otherwise, we can get a lot of traffic, or it just, it just opens itself up a little bit.
So can I just suggest that this really has nothing to do with the town select board?
I agree, yes.
Maybe you guys should be talking about this amongst yourselves?
That's true.
Because it sounds like it's, it sounds like from what we're hearing, that it's likely owned by these people and the, and the people that are on the other side of the, the way, and that you guys just need to talk amongst yourselves. Well, you need to resolve that question, and then figure out how to go forward, but, you know, if it becomes a town issue, then come back and, and see us, please, and, and we can consider what to do.
Appreciate your time, and we'll have, I'll have my attention at the, see, see if I can.
Good.
What, what year is your, your, your daughter in matros, just curious? So, so you've got a few year, so there's time yet, it's not like a rising junior, after two years, it won't matter. Okay, okay.
Rising junior should be driving her car.
Right, right. Well, it's just a little easy question. Someone mentioned that the stub road is 40 feet in width, and when I checked online, I thought it said all stub roads in Medfield are 50 feet, so I don't, I didn't know if that's a case in order.
The subdivision, the subdivision rules and regs have been tightened up since then.
Yeah.
So that was probably legal back in the 60s, or required whenever, that's, but at some point, they've made it wider, it's 50 feet now.
Yeah, I think it was 40 feet back in 63 when this was approved, yeah.
Anything else, guys? Thank you all for coming, hope you, hope you guys get it worked out.
I mean, it's good.
Uh, let's see, discussion items, discuss response to open letter regarding recent anti-Semitic events in Medfield from Medfield together. Wait a minute.
Nice to see you, John.
Goodness to you, Jose, what's your opinion?
Okay, so we're going forward with our discussion about our response to the open letter, discuss response to the open letter regarding recent anti-Semitic events in Medfield from Medfield together. Gus had, you had.
Yeah.
Your thoughts?
You want to review the bidding, when we had our earlier discussion, my, the point I made was that I was not a big fan of what I would call empty political rhetorical statements, and I'm far more interested in building the capability to hear about real events, have them reported to us, not necessarily only legal violations, but any events at all that we, we want about. So there's two parts of this, but with regard to the statement, my sense was that we talked last time, both you and Eileen thought a statement was a worthwhile thing to do, and even though my view is that I don't think that kind of a rhetoric rhetorical statement means a lot, does a lot, but I also don't think it does any harm. My biggest issue was if we were going to do something like that, rather than doing something that was just focused on one particular issue, antisemitism, and then next month, we'll have another statement that we have to issue on racism, and then another statement in a month. I basically said, what we should do, if we're going to do it, is put out a statement that covers everything. And so the list that you have here, the bulleted list are kind of, was my, what I think was a comprehensive list of all the things that we would condemn. Now, when I did that, I said, well, this is pretty lousy, this is a, a statement from the select board about all the things we're condemning, and there's nothing in here where we're saying about what we're promoting. So the second part of this, I actually wanted to make a more positive, proactive statement about the sorts of things that we wanted to promote, and that's what the four bullets at the bottom are.
I love that.
So I'm suggesting that as an alternative, as a statement that we would put out to, to respond to this.
And I'll just, I guess, it wasn't in the materials, but back in May, I had drafted a press release on this issue that I had circulated, and, and so that you were drafting this in response to my press release, I guess. Eileen, quick.
No, and I think to what you just said, which is perfect timing, you, you put your initial response, I think what, Gus, you've done is said, I'm, I'm going to make sure
I think what Gus you've done is said, I'm, I'm gonna make sure that we cover all the areas. And I love the fact that you actually have what we're committed to doing, which is to your point. Like, we're not just gonna throw something out there without letting people know if you're, this is what the Medfield town should stand for. So I, I think this is, this is, I support this.
So my reaction, Gus, when I read your second set of bullets there was that.
Second set or first set?
Second, the first set, I guess, I'm sorry.
First set, okay.
It says, while not an inclusive list, the select board specifically condemns speech and actions directed against individuals and groups based on, and then it's race, ethnicity, cultural background, religion, gender, economic status, political orientation, physical and mental condition, or age. And, and, um, and I guess my sense when I read this was that, um, the way that this is worded is that, um, it's so broad that we're condemning any, anything directed against, something about age. I mean, and, and so that there are valid things about age that we comment on. And so I just, I was concerned that this struck me, that it was, I just wasn't sure that it, that it, it affected what you were trying to do.
Pete, you're, you're saying you don't want age on the list and the oldest of the three.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's all of these things. It's, it's because, uh, there are all kinds of things that could be directed at this category of things that you've enumerated that are not hate speech. I mean, what we're responding to is hate speech. And, and there, there could be, we could have a, a policy statement that deals with race or something, uh, saying that, that we're not gonna tolerate, uh, and.
Well, I think you had to read the paragraph.
Based on race. And, and this, and this could basically prohibit that.
Uh, well, if you, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to respond to your comment because I'm not sure I fully understand your point. But the paragraph that leads into that, basically what I tried to do in the first paragraph is to get at, what is it? What is, is it bad when people say things or when, you know, people sometimes take actions that we object to? And what I was basically saying or trying to get to is what actually is it that, that caused, that's the offensiveness of it? And I, I kind of, you know, I, I, this issue of actions that people take that are intended to harass people, intimidate people, diminish people, devalue people, oppress them, or in some cases actually directly hurt them, whether it's psychological damage or in some cases physical damage, those are the things that are offensive. Uh, and, and so for me, what I tried, when I built that list and I said it wasn't inclusive, it was, I'll tell you what really prompted my, my putting that in there is I'm saying, you know, five years ago, if we had built this list, we would have meant, we would have basically, might have, might have talked about, uh, you know, uh, male chauvinism or something. And we would have been dealing with binary male, female type disrespect. And yet, just in the last couple of years, we've got transgender issues. And so I, I was cognizant of the fact, I tried to get the full list. But I was cognizant of the fact, just a few years ago, that wouldn't have been on my radar screen. And I'm being, being willing to bet that in another five years, or heck, a year from now, maybe the thing I left off was immigration status. And so I, I kinda didn't wanna just keep building this gigantic list, but I tried to build, put the things in that seemed to me to be the most significant dimensions. Recognizing that maybe we missed something and maybe we'll reissue this five years from now and add a bullet or two, I don't know. So my real point was really getting at the behavior and the purpose of the behavior, which is the real offensive thing. Those bullets are the, in some cases, they reflect real animosity towards certain groups. But in many cases, they reflect the weak knot, the weak spot that someone who's trying to do the stuff that's in my paragraph, that, above it, that's the factor that they tome in on to rub a raw nerve. And it may or may not be deliberately vindictive about that one particular thing. It's just, that's how you get to someone, is you go after them for this, to intimidate them, to go away, to roll over and play dead, whatever it is. That's what I was trying, I'm not saying that this is the exact words, but that was what I was trying to get at. And there may be better, as, you know, you may, you may have edits to it, uh, but that was where I was trying to go with the statement. And I was also trying to avoid have it be a two or three-page bureaucratic statement. It fits on less than one page, which I think the conciseness has some value to it.
You know, if, if, if I were to insert the word hate in front of speech here, and then I think I would be okay with your list. Because then it's clear that, that it's not just a list about ill-defined age or, or race things, but hate speech.
Yep.
Does that work for you, Eileen?
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, I'm good with that, sure.
All right, then with that, with that thing, with that edit, I guess I'm okay with it. I mean, I think it's important because this has been kind of festering or hanging around for a long time that we take some sort of action. Because it was such a, a terrible thing that was, was done in our town, so. All right, do we have a motion then?
Okay, motion to, motion to approve the open letter regarding recent anti-Semitic events in Medfield from Medfield Together with the edits you just made to the letter in the packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
So we'll put it on proper letterhead, post it on your website, send it out to, uh, through our social media and through all of the organizations in town.
Awesome.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, town administrator performance evaluation update and discussion of town administrator goals for FY twenty-four.
So for FY twenty-three goals, um, we originally talked about these, I believe it was in June. They've been fully completed. I have updated this for you, um, to show you where we are in completing our fiscal year twenty-three goals by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. I believe you're working, the three of you are working on doing a performance evaluation.
So I'm delinquent once again.
Yeah, me too, I'm sorry.
Well, no, you're, you're okay. The first, there was, first action was in my court to update the spreadsheet we did last year to reflect the twenty-twenty-three goals.
It's your fault.
And I, it's my fault, you know, it's my fault.
How dare you go on vacation?
I know, exactly. So what I will do is I will update that spreadsheet. It's just the spreadsheet, it's just the form, and I will distribute it to the two of you. Christine, you've, and I'll, I'll send it to you as well, Christine. I think last year, you, based on your own self-assessment, had a number. And I would suggest you do that again this year and send it out. So that's administratively balls in my court to get the spreadsheets to the three of you. Christine, you've given us kind of the, the information on performance, so we actually can move ahead with doing it. As I recall, last year, I know I personally differed with you in a couple of different areas. The practical matter, it didn't hurt you, but it was, I looked at it in terms of the, that, that assessment has a certain scale around not started, started, partway done, almost done, done. And so it's a little, I was a little more exacting. I think you used a three-point scale and I set up a five-point scale. The other issue that we talked about before was who would compile these? And we had discussed about asking, I think Mark Fisher's name came up. I didn't follow up with him, just given the circumstances, he just lost his father. So, um, I guess I like the consensus of you guys, whether you still wanna go down that path. It's, you know, it's a month later or something like that, but I, I was reluctant to ask him, uh, whether we wanna go the same path we did last year through the lawyers to get this thing done, because now we're, now we're going into two months out into the fiscal year, so I'm sensitive on the timing on that. But, um, I can go either way on that piece.
I'm not married to it, if it's Mark Fisher, if it's Mike, or whatever former slot board member.
And maybe that's, maybe that's why you should do it, ask Mike.
Because I, I think, I don't think we have to go outside counsel to do it when we have, especially between Mark and Mike. They've got experience to understand what's going on.
I'll be where my head is too.
So out of deference to Mark, just because, I don't wanna, I just didn't wanna ask him at the time. But let me start with Mike and have him say if we'll do it or not, and then we'll go there, okay?
I would suggest you, you give Mark the chance to say no.
I can ask him now if you think, I, okay, I'll, I'll start. I, I'm, I'll take your direction. So I can stick with Mark first and ask him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, next item is discussion of board and committee survey results and schedule of board and committee recognition event.
If I can just stop you for one minute?
Okay, please.
I had also given to you town administrator goals from July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirty of twenty-twenty-four. We have put some, uh, we've populated our list. Obviously, we always leave plan, uh, space for you to put on your items to include on this list. To be honest, uh, we're already at the end of August. We've already started to work on a lot of the goals that are in here. And, you know, given the short timeframe in the year, we would like to move forward. If there are other things that you'd like to add on there, uh, if we can get that done by the meeting on the twelfth, we can keep moving.
So I'll quickly give you a heads up, one I've already talked to Christine about, um, uh, contracts. I would actually like to see when we sign contracts that there's a recap, and I'll give you a perfect example of the contract we all signed for the mowing at the state hospital has been a complete and utter disaster, right? For a lot of reasons, I'm not even gonna go into it. Unfortunately, correct me if I speak out of turn here, Christine, but we've paid that contract in full for June and July. And if you've been up there, that contract was not met either of those months. And so, um, it, I, you know, we should be watching town money and how we're spending it. So to me, we, we may call out contracts in the future that if there are deliverables like this one in this packet tonight, that when we go to pay fifteen hundred dollars, we go to pay fifteen thousand dollars, that we're checking the box that what was said to be done is done. And we're just not willy-nilly paying it off and then realizing, well, it wasn't really all the way done. But so that's, so I talked to you today and we.
Yeah, I, I would like to defend why we made that payment.
Oh, no, 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 don't, don't worry about it. I'm not, I'm not.
We, I'm just going to ask, we are never doing no-mow-may.
Oh, in a blank, yeah.
At the state hospital, ever again. I love you, Hilly, but I can't do that. It, it's caused a tremendous amount of, of issues. I have talked to the contractor and we are moving forward with a different procurement as of this evening. So we will rectify that, but I, I just wanna.
That's the bad news. The good news is the select board is moving to no-shave November.
All right, so, but I just, I would like to add that, just some, some, and we talked about it, Christine, earlier today, about how we could.
Yeah, so, so what I mean, yeah, what we suggested, uh, offering is providing you a quarterly update on the contracts that you've signed and where they are, if they've been completed, if they're open, uh, where we are on those deliverables.
So Eileen, your, your focus is on the performance of the contract as opposed to the preparation of the contract package that we signed.
Well, it's contracts in general, but we, we, but my concern more than anything is if we're paying out a contract and it's not met.
Right.
That's wrong in so many ways.
But when you use the word "we" there, that's we, the town, that's not we, the three of us, because we're not the ones.
I think we, we signed the contract, so we are accountable for when, when they're being fulfilled. We should be checking to make sure to our, to the team, okay, did we confirm that what we asked to be done was done? And unfortunately.
So you're talking for renewals. What I'm getting, what I'm getting is it's not our job to sit there and confirm the performance of the con. We sign a contract because we believe it's a legitimate procurement. It's incumbent on the town employees responsible for the contract to ensure performance.
She will be coming back and giving us quarterly updates with, you know, you sign a contract, okay, for, let's do another one. Mo goes to buy a truck for three hundred and some odd thousand dollars, comes back, they didn't end up spending all of it because we, certain, certain things changed from what we put our name on to. That's all I wanna do, because it's, it's being fiscally responsible to make sure we know what the net result is of something that we signed.
Yes, Mr. Masur, can you please use the microphone? Sorry to have to make you get up.
You might have to sit in the front row the rest of the meeting.
Better get that battery pretty quick there, Bill.
It's just, you're getting your steps, Bill. I, I worked this out with Cindy, you're just getting steps.
Yes, yes. I don't have a Fitbit to track them though. I, I always wondered why in your data packages and everything else, like when you submit a contract for review and something else, why you didn't ever have a little checklist or cover sheet to go with it? I mean, you know my background, all right? I mean, we probably did it. Half a billion dollars worth of business a year, I saw every contract over a hundred thousand dollars. They all came with a list, a checklist of things that you did to get to that contract before you submitted to somebody to review. And it had things like, you know, this was a sole source, but it's an engineering contract. Now, you know all that when you sit here and you discuss it in the meetings and everything else, but you could have all that information in advance on a checklist. I don't, again, I don't understand why you haven't done that.
Do you have one of those checklists handy that you saved?
No, I, I threw everything out.
I think what they're anticipating is that myself, as the chief procurement officer, has done that for them.
So, Mr. Masur.
Well, but again, but Gus asks questions, you know, like.
Well, I have a checklist in my head.
And you ask Mo to defend why he picked somebody and everything else. I have no problem with asking him to do that.
These contracts are designed going forward. They provide for our process, which includes the fact that the work is performed satisfactorily in its progress payments. And even with the example you just gave, like a vehicle purchase, we don't pay anything until that vehicle is fully purged, fully assembled and delivered and tested. So, and that's state law, that's not just practice and policy.
Look at what's going on at the state hospital. It's, it's clear as can be. We, we were paying the three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for cut, which was to include a trim in clauses ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Clearly calls it what's supposed to happen.
So there needs to be oversight once a contract is signed, is the simple answer.
I think that's what we're establishing, that it's my oversight.
Well, it's, it's just, if it's, if, if at the end of June, end of July, end of August, it's supposed to be clean and cut and, and it's not, but yet the check's still going to him. That's what I'm saying, we just need to have a better system so that's not happening.
Well, that's the voucher thing. That shouldn't have been signed as a voucher, to be perfectly honest, because when you do that, you're certifying, again, but because there's a statute that says so, that that work was performed.
Help me when you say voucher.
I signed the vendor warrant.
Okay, well, that, trust me, that's why I'm saying we are signing it, right? God knows what we're gonna get tonight at the end. And yet we're signing it and, and we're doing it.
Yes.
Without confirming, unfortunately, that a contract that was signed was not met.
So, so maybe in the case of the state, I mean, part of this is just because you have a contract that didn't get carried out properly, doesn't mean you have a problem with your process. It means you had a contract that doesn't get carried out properly. And in the case of the state hospital, there is someone who has volunteered to be responsible for the performance there, who's physically not often there, but for no fault of their own, they're.
Well, I think this was separate from the landscaping.
It was?
Yes, yes.
So who's respons, who, who's the, who's the point of contact for that client, that contract?
Myself.
So you actually inspect the grass cutting up at the state hospital?
Yes, and we were working with the contractor.
That's gotta change, that's gotta, so, okay, so this is a delegation issue. Okay, got it, okay. And the problem is, back to where we started, I guess, around building and grounds.
Yes.
We have this gap in our structure that nobody is responsible. So speaking personally, thinking about the past two or three months, I think Christine's probably placed her priorities on places that I'm far happier she placed her priorities on than grass cut. And that's, I'm not, I'm not trivializing the grass cutting, but it's like, that's an issue of delegation. We need a way to delegate that.
But it's the jewel property of the town, and we all got emails from citizens that they were, they were concerned with what was going on up there. So all I'm saying is, it's simple. Like, we paid someone and they didn't do their job. I, I, I wanted to make sure going forward, if we're, there's a contract in the packet tonight, it's a fifteen thousand deliverable for certain things, that there's a staple that just says, okay, it's, it's done. We paid it, here's the documentation that supports, that was achieved. Otherwise, these contracts start to become very gray and squishy and you're not actually asking for hard deliverable. So it's really easy for them to get paid without having a hard deliverable. Fortunately, the state hospital, it's really easy. You drive up there, the top of Cottage Road looks like crap, so it's really cut and dry that it's, it hasn't been trimmed since last fall.
It is easy, all I'm saying, it is easy, but I don't think Christine's the one.
Christine knows I'm not mad at her, like, this is not, oh, my goodness.
No, it is, it is my responsibility and I worked with the contractor. We had some issues. We started off from that contract with a very bad place because of a decision we made in our policy to do the mow, no-mow, whatever, may. So we worked with the contractor who explained how hard and how difficult it was. We were trying to work with him through that and I anticipated we would get through to doing that. We have ended our arrangement with them and we are hiring a new contractor.
This is a, this is a dumb question, but in general, who's responsible for mowing the rest of the town's property?
Yes.
They're everybody.
So.
Everybody. You recall the meeting we had years ago when nobody would admit to mowing the lawn over at the church?
Or, or the, or in the cemetery.
Yes, that's why I'm applying for an efficiency grant to simplify how many pieces of property I have to make sure are being mowed.
I guess what I'm saying is these things need to be, if you're paying somebody to do a job that normally would have been done by department X, then department X ought to at least have some kind of responsibility, supervisory or whatever, to at least look at the job that's being done and come back and relay those things. It shouldn't be your, it shouldn't be your job.
Unfortunately, the, the state hospital has always been just a special little project.
I understand that, but again, my comment is a system to move stuff through, move stuff through faster. Through your review cycles and everything else, cut down the questions you need to ask because you've been supplied the answers in advance by going through the checklist. I would just ask you to consider something along those lines.
So, so one of the things I learned tonight was that Park and Rec is still cutting their fields. I thought that.
I thought that their, their field cutting had been subsumed in some other arrangement by this time, but apparently not, so.
So, Bill, how come you let the overlook get so overcrowded?
I'm managing.
Oh, Jesus.
Are we trying to get out of here before midnight?
We'll move on.
I clearly need to buy a lawnmower.
Do you realize that at the very beginning, John Thompson and I were up there with weed waggers, you know, the stuff that was signed, so you could read the signs and everything else in front of the property?
Did I pay you? Just checking, asking for a rent.
You paid my mileage, my amount of town to get the water tower ready.
Next, discussion of board and committee survey results and scheduled board and committee recognition event. I thought this was, this survey was very interesting.
Yes, and I would like to, I believe at your meeting last year, we were putting together, finally, as in my goals, Chris McQ Potts is the one who recommended that you do the board and committee survey. And so she worked closely with Brittany, and they put the survey out. I think it's fantastic results. We had been talking all year before we got the results about doing some sort of board and committee recognition, and I think the results on the survey really proved two, two things that we were working on. One, which was my goal last year, was to do a board and committee onboarding handbook. We have a draft of that that's gone to the town clerk. The town clerk by charter oversees the board and committees and the onboarding, so she's reviewing that now. And second, we'll be planning in September a recognition event for all of our board and committee members. I think it's important they feel valued as a part of our team. A lot of the things we do and don't do are due to our board and committee members, and it's, it's important that we recognize their effort and their contribution to our town. So I appreciate them, and I really appreciate everybody taking the time to answer our survey on this. I know Jerry said we've been surveying everybody a lot. And so finally, my board and committee members got surveyed themselves, which was probably a change for them, but I appreciate their, their input. As you know, we're always trying to improve and do better, and having our board and committee members be a part of that is really important to me.
So one of the things that jumped out at me, Chris, was the longevity of the people on the committees, that almost half of them had been there three years or less, so that we're getting high turnover on our committees. What I saw there, and so I thought to myself, my gosh, you have to retrain a new group of people at every three years, or half of them.
So we, we initially took that feedback as well, but you've also had some recent boards and committees which are shorter in timeframe, some special advisory committees, so that may have also skewed some of your results on that. But we are seeing people who are retiring or moving out of town, and then we're replacing those people on our, our boards and committees. I will tell you, over the last three or four months, we've had a lot, a lot more people reaching out to us, saying, I've just moved to town. I'm really interested in joining a committee, so I think there's, there's an uptick in the people who want to volunteer. So this is definitely the right time for us to recognize them.
Major reaction I had was actually a lot of this information I looked at, and I actually felt good about what I saw. So as opposed to information that tells you what you got to change, I actually, you know, the first page with the fifty percent haven't served before and fifty percent have, it was like, well, that's, that's pretty good. You know, in other words, if like eighty-five percent had served before and only fifteen percent were new, I'd feel bad. And if, you know, seventy-five percent were brand new and only twenty-five percent remained, I'd feel bad. This is fifty-fifty. It's like, if I had to pick a number, because that gives you a degree of experience that you're building from, but you also have a flow, inflow of new people. And it's, it's funny, I, when I was on the warrant committee, I loved the warrant committee, but after six years, personally, I would have been happy to keep serving on the warrant committee, but I kind of said, no, it's not good. Even if you're good, if you're camped out on a committee for a long time that's good, then everybody around you that comes in later sort of assumes that you've got more expertise and more everything, and you've established the procedures, and you lose the vibrancy that you need in committees. You need the new ideas, you need the people who are just, people coming into town who have good things to contribute, have the energy to do it if there's no opportunity for them to do it. So there's this kind of balance between keeping the, you know, it's like the yogurt. You need the old yogurt to make the new yogurt, but you need to make the new yogurt. And I thought a lot of the results that were in here, I felt pretty, pretty good about the distribution. It was pretty good to me. I thought, some of the stuff I found interesting was how people got on committees and the vast number of people that somebody asked me to, or sorry, I was sought out as a, which is, I look at my own experience. That's exactly how I got on committees. The one time I put my name in on the back of the town meeting warrant, we came up to Board of Select, and they said, oh, this guy looks like he's qualified, and then I didn't hear from anybody for five or six years.
I think we still have it in the file at the local desk.
You probably do. Yeah, you probably do. My neighbor commented, yeah, they, they had your thing. They said it was really impressive. And then it's silenced for five or six years.
I sent in my resume, Gus, and they sent it back and said, here's, send in our form.
That wouldn't have done any good, Pete.
And I said, oh, well, okay.
Anyway, I thought it was good stuff.
Yeah, I think it's really good, and we'll, we'll make sure the results are posted to the select board website for everybody to read.
Oh, good, good, good.
And are you thinking about what type of event you want to have, or did?
We are, I think we're, we're looking at a Tuesday evening and off Tuesday from a meeting, you know, in the late afternoon, early evening. Just, I think it'll be interesting for our board and committee members to be in the same room and introduce themselves and talk about different things. And we are planning also to use it as a recruiting tool for people who are interested in boards and committees to come meet current board and committee members who are there. So it's an opportunity for us to.
If, if you're going to do that, and I would have said this even if Bill wasn't in the room, there are some people in this town who are not appointed or otherwise designated members of committee.
Bill is on a committee.
Okay, so he gets in anyway. Well, there might be a few.
But yes, there are a few that, yes, and there are some former.
Obviously doing a great job because everybody's aware of it.
There are some former board and committee members that we were, met today at our event. And so I would also like to invite some former committee members to that as well.
All right, good.
Yeah, bring a friend.
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll be good. Okay.
Action items, board and committee appointments, affordable housing trust, capital budget committee, water and sewage.
Yes, so we're, we're still working through our list of appointments. Should have been in your, it's in your packet.
Yep.
I can't put my hands on my copy of it right now.
Can we move all of those appointments then, or do we need to do them separately and individually?
There's only a handful of them, so I think it'd be best if you read them.
And are the terms all, I didn't pay attention, the terms all one-year renewal?
No, I'll give it back to you, and then you can get the.
Okay, so on the affordable housing trust, we're looking to reappoint Eileen Murphy, Ann Thompson, and Carrie McCormick. Do we have a motion for that?
To, to two-year terms.
Two-year terms, yeah.
Oh, and I found one.
A motion to reappoint myself, Ann Thompson, and Carrie McCormick to the affordable housing trust.
For two-year terms.
For a two-year term.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. On the water and sewage, we're reappointing William Harvey and as a member for a three-year term, and David Pucci for, as an associate for a one-year term. Motion?
All right, so a motion that we appoint for the board of water and sewer, William Harvey, reappointment for three-year. Dave Pucci, associate, reappointment for one year.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. And on the capital budget committee, we are reappointing Michael Markucci for a one-year term. Everybody's for a one-year term. Robert Agler's a one-year term. We're appointing Robert Slaney, and we're reappointing Megan Sullivan, Andrew Foster, Michael LaFrancesca, and Christine Truylle. Do I have a motion?
Who are we appointing?
Brett Nelson.
Brett Nelson will be, he will be the warrant committee representation. Sharon Tatra was the warrant committee representative on the capital budget committee, and.
I just didn't think that's what you said. I thought you.
Yeah, he, everybody else is a reappointment except for Brett, which is a new appointment.
Bob, I think Bob Slaney is in the version that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Slaney was originally, it has been changed to Brett Nelson. I apologize. It's Brett Nelson.
All right, so substitute Brett Nelson for Robert Slaney.
Yeah, he really was, okay.
Sorry, the warrant committee had a meeting, and they determined it was going to be Brett Nelson.
All right, so a motion to appoint to the capital budget committee Mike Markucci for a reappointment, one-year term, Brett Nelson, appoint for a one-year term, and then the following are all reappointment for one-year terms. Bob Agler, Megan Sullivan, Andrew Foster, Mike LaFrancesca, and Christine Truylle.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. And next on our action items, vote to assign the estoppel certificate acknowledging the existing agreements in place and sale of the select DPW lease and PPA agreement to Keystone Bank National Association. Any questions? Nope. Do we have a motion then?
Okay, a motion to, to sign the contrac, oh, it's going to be a motion to sign the.
So moved works.
What's that?
Just so moved works, because he just read it.
Okay, oh, okay, so moved.
So seconded.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Oh, he motioned. I hear what you're saying. Sorry. I'm, I'm getting the system down. I'm looking at me.
The next item is vote to.
We, we didn't vote on it.
I did.
Oh, you did?
All in favor?
Case, aye.
Just for the record, we are in hour four.
And only, and only page two.
Vote to sign a contract with INIS Associates Limited to continue work to comply with MBTA zoning law to be funded by community one-stop grant.
Do you want me to second that? Is that the intent here?
Well, you can, you can say so moved, if you want.
Well, before we do that, Chris, Chris, yeah, I had a comment about this. I talked with Christine separately around how this, I understand this is a continuation of the various work we're doing to figure out how to maintain or continue on the path of the MBTA Communities Act, hopefully to get to a resolution that the town can live with, that meets the needs, that allows us to keep, keep moving with Mass Works grants and things like that. The only comment I had about the process that was laid out here is the first review of the select board is after a draft bylaw has been developed, which I think is too late. So basically, if you looked at the workflow, there was, the, the consultants were going to go out. They were going to basically get feedback from a number of different groups, from the public. And based on that, it seemed like they were going to arrive at some conclusions about how the town might best go about implementing some sort of zoning that would be supportive of the MBTA Communities Act. I think that's the point, that we should hear the results of that analysis as a select board before they start developing draft bylaw changes. Because as it stands right now, we wouldn't see anything until the draft bylaws drafted, probably in like January or February, before it's going to be up for a vote in May. So I think, I think we probably would have two, two review points. One at the conclusion of the analysis, and then one at the, when the draft bylaw is ready.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll make that change with Maria.
Okay, and so I guess we don't sign it until the things are changed, or is that?
We won't vote to do that right now, then.
You can vote to sign it pending that, and I will, I will work with Maria to schedule that. We really do need to start moving forward on this given the timeframe.
We'll vote with it pending.
Do we have a motion to that effect then?
Uh, yes, so we will motion to sign the contract with INIS Associates with the included updated edits to address, was it the bylaws that would be presented to the select board?
It's basically changes, changes to the select board review points in the overall work process.
Okay. To continue the work to comply with the MBTA zoning laws to be funded by community one-stop grant.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, we.
Can I hold you for one second? I apologize. I didn't see Chris McQ had raised her hand and would like to, to speak back about the board and committee surveys, so. Hold on, Chris.
There you go.
There you go. We can hear you.
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't, I guess I wasn't typing fast enough. On this survey, I just wanted to, to let you guys know. I don't know whether you know about the independent sector, but if we were ever, if we ever wanted to quantify how much the value of the volunteer time is, the current dollar value of a volunteer hour is thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. So if we were just to take those sixty people that filled out the survey and assume that they volunteer one hour, put, put out one hour a week, it amounts to that ninety-nine thousand dollars of, of volunteer value. So I just thought I'd mention that. I thought that might be of interest.
It is. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Especially since they're in hour four.
Yeah, well, we only meet once a month, though, in the summer, so we're kind of right on, on the course.
So then our next item is vote to sign an amendment to the existing contract with Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, CADCA, originally signed in July, on July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, to reflect the reduction in the scope of services for the third and final year, and a reduction in the cost of services.
And I just had a quick question about what the reduction, what was dropped in the third year, if that's any, if that's any, you know, we're saving, we're, we're reducing money, so I'll be in favor of it, but.
I actually have Kathy McDonald in the audience, so let me allow Kathy to speak. Hi, Kathy.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, Kathy.
Thanks for coming.
So let me answer your question. Hi, everybody. So reduction in service is simply less hours of consultation. We have another clinical, not clinical consult, strike that, another consultant onboard helping us prepare for our competitive reapplication for year six through ten. And so we're using more consulting time with her, so we need less consulting times with our data collection and such. So it's a shifting of our resources and our time.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Good.
Thanks, Kathy.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, motion to sign an amendment to the existing contract with Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America, CADCA, originally signed on July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, to reflect a reduction in scope of services for the third and final year and a reduction in the cost of services.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, vote to sign the local preference application and local preference letter and letter in support of the use of historic tax credits for the Medfield State Hospital redevelopment.
So you actually have already signed one copy of this regulatory use agreement for the affordable houses. However, DHCD changed their name, and so we had to redo all of the paperwork, and we're bringing that back to you. The letter of support for Trinity to use the historic tax credits is new. And then DHCD asked us to make a few changes to the regulatory land use agreement. They wanted us to outline exactly what the artist housing would be and to once again specify why we were requesting local preference, which we do for any of these developments. So they, they took your first, signed one, asked us to make a few changes, include a few things, and then said, oh, by the way, you need all new forms because we changed our name to something that nobody can remember.
Yeah, I wish they wouldn't do that.
I know.
Do we have a motion then?
Just a comment as an aside, I, so I spent some time on the artist affordable units because I, I, first off, I was saying, wait a minute. I thought they were all supposed to be work, works, work-life right near the chapel, and it turns out they are. They're in those buildings. And then in my head, I had pictured an artist work-life place being a studio or a one-bedroom apartment, sort of a hovel where artists, but, but then I saw, wait a minute. Look at all these three-bedroom units that were there, and, and so it was just an observation. I kind of said, wait a minute, so you have the, you have the affordable units, and then you have this other side lobe of artist affordable units. I, I read enough of everything that was in there to say, okay, I understand why, I understand how it works. But that caught me by surprise because I had just kind of assumed, I actually had assumed the distribution of units for artist affordable would not necessarily extend up into the three-bedroom units the way it did, but I don't care. I just, that surprised me. No, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so just an observation, and they are still in the same building. They are together, so it's going to be an interesting dynamic.
Which was a conversation with Trinity, which they were agreeable to.
So motion to vote to sign the local preference application and local preference letter and letter in support of use of historic tax credits for Medfield State Hospital redevelopment.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote to sign the intra, inter-municipal agreement creating a shared housing services office with the towns of Hopkinton, Milton, Norwood, Randolph, Sharon, and of course, Medfield.
So I think we originally brought this project to you, I think Sarah and I originally brought it in early twenty-twenty-one, and we are finally getting this off the ground. And you had committed twenty thousand dollars worth of ARPA funding, which we have received approval from Norfolk County to do. This will help us, we are obligated through, sorry, DHCD, I can't, I'm not there yet. Through DHCD, we are obligated to monitor the affordable housing developments, particularly the apartments, to make sure that they continue to be rented under the regulations that are in place. We are also finding that some of our ownership units, both at Turtle Brook and at Allendale, are starting to turn over. And given the complexity in selling those units now, twenty-five years ago, it was something Mike and I used to do. Given the complexity, we really need a dedicated housing services person for that assistance. Especially as there are questions coming up. I know we received some questions about how hard it was to apply, where people were looking to get into Aura, and I know I've had some questions today about the process for Enclave, which is the Henley South project. So this will be really helpful both to Maria and my staff to get this in place. So this will be really helpful both to Maria and my staff to get this, uh, in place.
The rentals have to be monitored annually.
Yes.
So did we get a motion and a second or not?
No, I will motion, I was waiting for you to make sure I was good to go with that. So motion to vote to sign the inter-municipal agreement creating a shared housing services office with the towns of Hopkinton, Milton, Norwood, Randolph, and Sharon.
And mine are, I think we're voting to authorize the town administrator to sign this.
Yes, if you can authorize me to sign it, that would be great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is a vote to sign the inter-municipal agreement with Millis and Medway for senior sealer of weights and measures.
Yes, so, uh, Medway, Millis, and Medfield have shared, um, a sealer of weights and measures for some time now. The person who's currently in the position is no longer able to provide that service, so I have been working with Millis and Medfield to upgrade that, I believe we talked about it, uh, recently at a meeting. Medway will be the lead, lead town on this, uh, they have somebody in place. And for us, this person, although appointed by the Board of Selectmen as a specialty position, will report to the building commissioner and will be located in their office on the days that they are in Medfield. This is an increase over what we had budgeted, so we will, uh, work with the Warren Committee, uh, if necessary, for an appropriations transfer. We usually spend about thirty-five hundred dollars, um, for the former sealer of weights and measures, and this will be an increase to seventy-eight hundred for the town of Medfield.
Okay, motion?
So my, my comments on this one, going through the contract itself, the issue of the advisory committee, it says the advisory committee comprised of one representative from each municipality who shall be appointed by the town manager administrator, not trying to pin who it is, but is that, is that like an affordable housing? I was just curious who that might be likely to be, didn't immediately, it wasn't obvious to me it was you because you're appointing someone, but I was just trying to get a sense of what that probably is. I'm thinking affordable housing trust member, or-
Uh, for the sealer of weights and measures?
No, this is the-
Oh, you're back on the housing?
Wait a minute, yeah, I'm on the housing still, sorry. I'm sorry, I backed this up. No, never mind, we've already voted on it, I'll, I'll talk to you offline on that.
Let's talk about that.
I'll talk to you offline on that. Sealer weights and measures.
Did you second that yet, Gus?
No, I have questions on this one, too. I have questions on this one, too. Uh, how did, so, the one thing that struck me is, in this state, in this contract, it says that the person is not an employee of our town.
Corrects.
But the person is covered by our professional liability insurance for the work that they do in the town. So Mark, this may be a question for you, I'm, I'm sitting there saying, so you have this person who's not an employee, who's doing work and is covered under our town's professional liability insurance. And I was just questioning the, the legal structure.
Well, he's, he's performing on behalf of the town. It's a practical matter, this is one of those cases where the liability is minimal to none, but there's insurance that has to be in place.
Yep, but the insurance company will say yes?
The non-employee stuff is critical because in these shared arrangements, it's all driven by what are, what's the compensation and benefits. And this is just language to make it clear that Medway, all, our responsibility is to pay Medway, but we've agreed to pay them, and they're responsible for compensation and benefits.
They've factored in the benefits and the cost to us, similar to our veteran services.
No, if you read paragraph five, first page, bottom paragraph. Town of Medway agrees to cover the sealer under its professional liability policy for acts in the town of Medway. The towns of Millis and Medfield agree to cover the sealer under their respective-
Right, that's, that's the liability claims, that's the third-party claims.
So the thing that confused me is, so you have an insurance company that's issued professional liability insurance to this town. If this sealer, who's not a town employee, does something wrong-
It doesn't matter, he's acting as our agent.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as you, yes, once we have finalized the name of the person who will be officially the sealer of weights and measures, you will appoint them to that specialty position, and they then de facto become-
So once you appoint them to that, 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 that's what I was trying to guess, what's the legal control?
It's like the board of health agent, uh, there's, you know, they're independent agents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think probably on the, on the third page, any, uh, paragraph thirteen, "Any services activities undertaken to the sealer shall be deemed to be engaged in the service and employment of that respective town, notwithstanding that such service activity undertaken is being performed in or for other towns." And I said, does this fly with the government? And, and what I'm, so it's basically, it's a quote employee who really isn't an employee. And I'm, what I'm sensitive, Mark, is the government's emphasis on employees versus contractors. This seems like a very murky, I, I, it's just a legal wording issue that I have here, it's not the setup.
So this was an issue because they're, uh, because they're a full-time employee of Medway, and they will be performing work for Medfield and Millis during that time in which they are in Medway.
Yep.
It was so that everybody was clear, they were not-
So this is legally-
Not, not double-dipping, um, issue, that they, they could-
And it's legally sufficient with the government, that's all, federal government, okay?
Yeah, so they could work in Medfield-
Okay.
-while technically being paid full-time by Medway.
Got it, okay, I'm, I'm good.
Want to second it, then?
Motion.
Oh, move.
To sign the intermunicipal, oh, wait, wait, yeah, we're on that one. Uh, actually, I already motioned it, didn't I, and then?
Did you?
Yeah.
Second it, please, then.
Second.
All in favor? Aye aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is a vote to accept the check for Hinckley Playground from Medfield Foundation.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold that until the September twelfth meeting.
Vote to approve the use of the Wetlands Protection Fund by the Conservation Commission for Conservation Agent Contract Services.
Yes, so under the Wetlands Protection Fund, similar to a vote you were take, had to take last year, because we have engaged the use of a consultant and we have been unable to hire, um, an employee for the conservation agent, we have had to transfer funds from the Wetlands Protection Fund, which can only be used, uh, for activities of the conservation agent. I am asking for your approval, CONCOM has already approved, but I'm asking for your approval for a transfer of one hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents.
Ooh, baby.
It's too much, Chris.
I told you, Frank, they were, I told you they weren't going to be happy about that.
All right, so I will motion to approve the use of the Wetland Protection Fund by the Conservation Commission for Conservation Agent Contract Services.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.
Okay, and I'm actually going to hold number twenty, the cooking company contract, uh, they would like to come in and have a presentation to you, so they're going to come in on the twelfth as well.
Uh, next then is a vote to request use of town, towns Norfolk County ARPA funding allocation for the purchase and installation of a new secure drop box for the townhouse at thirty-five hundred dollars.
My question is, why do we need it?
Uh, the box that we have now is currently not as secure as we would like. It has seen better days, and given the amount of voting we anticipate to be done by mail in twenty twenty-four and dropped off at the drop box, the town clerk would strongly recommend that we put a more secure box in its site.
So, so is this like the kind of mailboxes we now have where people can't send fish hooks down? Or what, what's, what makes it more secure, or is it just that it's-
I think it's slightly larger.
Well, the way they handle it, depending on which model you go with.
This one out here, you can, you can, you can drop, uh, tape down in a, around a, a plastic bottle, and you can pull the stuff out.
That was my question, is that what the upgrade is, that you can't do that anymore?
You won't, you won't be able to do that, and it's, it's going to be slightly larger. We, we anticipate a significant amount of, uh, drop-off ballots next year.
That's just thirty-five hundred dollars for better graphics on the outside of the box.
No, it is going to look nicer, but I promise you, it will not be-
It's not going to be something that's going to catch someone's eye.
No.
We don't want to draw attention to it, we just want it to be there.
Oh, the American eagle and the flag, that's not what?
Sorry, no. All right, motion?
What has this town become? All right.
Town seal, town seal, everybody.
Town seal.
Town seal.
Uh, vote to request the use of town Norfolk County ARPA fund, funding allocation for the purchase and installation of a new secure drop box for the townhouse for thirty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Aye aye. Uh, next item is vote to approve a one-day liquor license request from Montrose School for their homecoming and beer garden for parents on September fifteenth, six to eight AM, PM, and alumni reunion on September sixteen from six to ten PM.
One's indoor and one's outdoor, right?
Over the top, yes.
The fifteenth is outdoor and the field, the sixteenth is inside. Can I motion?
Yeah, please.
All right, motion to approve the one-day liquor license request from Montrose School for their homecoming and beer garden for parents on September fifteenth from six to eight PM, and alumni reunion on September sixteenth from six to ten PM.
Second.
Can we make it conditional on their parking school buses in their parking lot?
We have already tried that.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, vote to approve contract with R.E. Brown and Company for Accounting.
Yes, this is, um, as I mentioned, um, prior, we had, uh, an engagement letter for the third year of a contract with our auditors. Our auditing firm had been purchased, uh, by a larger group, and we have determined at this time that we are going to engage, um, a, a new auditing firm. So you have a new engagement letter in front of you today.
Do we have a motion, then?
All right, we're good to go. Motion to vote to approve contract with R.E. Brown and Company for Accounting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, request from MYBA to post signs for four additional weeks, past the two weeks allowed by the Select Board Sandwich Board Policy for a total of six weeks at the usual locations to advertise registration.
So this one from a, you know, on the basis of the request, I don't have any heartburn with it, but I think if we're going to approve a six-week period over the two-week period, I would like us to define some coherent policy basis for us to do that, because I would guess there would be a whole bunch of groups that would prefer to have their signs up for six weeks. So I, I don't know whether it's-
Why do they need six weeks? I asked, it's Medfield Youth Baseball, is that what that is?
Yes, they said two weeks was not sufficient, and they wanted longer, and they said that they usually get six weeks, and reminded them, doing it for six weeks without permission for six weeks does not qualify me approving this.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I mean, I, I could be compromised and say four, I mean, it's, it's giving it to month head.
But even if it's four, what I'm getting at is anybody else who puts a sign up, wouldn't, if you got the high school play, wouldn't you rather have it advertised for four weeks rather than two weeks? So you're going to have, you're going to double the signs at all the usual locations if we go to four weeks, because we're going to have signs that are there for twice as long, so you're going to have more signs.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
And I'm not against doing it, it's just I found myself saying, what would be the coherent rationale that would say, we would do it here, but we haven't made a policy change, the time period that signs can be up at the usual locations?
How about, how about if we approve it for two weeks and invite them to reapply? And then they can just come back and we can give them another two weeks.
Yeah, okay. That, that works better, because that way anybody that wants to do that can come and reapply if they have an argument for it, okay?
So the motion is to approve the MYB to post signs for two weeks, as we allow at the usual locations to advertise registration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Citizen comments? Anybody dares to comment, they'll be bludgeoned.
Everybody, no questions, no nothing?
Mr. Masara, did you want to comment?
He's not on, not on the agenda.
Consent agenda, uh, Metropolis High School Theater Society request to post signs advertising the Fall Musical on November seventeen for the two weeks prior to the intersection, prior at the intersection of North Main, intersection of Route one oh nine, Hartford Street, northeast corner of Route twenty-seven and South Street. And then we also have requests to post signs advertising Cultural Fest on October seven at North and Main from September twenty-two to October twenty-sixth, October sixth, I'm sorry. Two weeks for each, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So can I just ask, on the, on the twenty, on number twenty-five, is, are those the, the usual locations? Is that basically what we're acknowledging here?
Yeah, a couple of them, actually.
So I, I-
There's, because there's what, four?
Well, there's North and Main, intersection of Route one oh nine and Hartford, northeast corner twenty-seven, and South Street.
Correct.
So that's the four, so those are four usual? Okay.
I'm just pulling it up.
All right, so I motion that we approve on the consent agenda the request from Medfield High School Theater Society request to post signs for advertising the Fall Musical on November seventeenth for the two weeks prior at the intersection of North Main, intersection of Route one oh nine, Hartford Street, northeast corner of Route twenty-seven and South Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And request to post signs advertising Culture Fest on October seventh on North and Main from September twenty-second to October sixth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So only want one location, and those shouldn't intersect dates.
So we've got meeting minutes, I have an review of them, have-
Before you go, I would remind you that you haven't closed your hearing on the-
I have a, I have a note to myself that-
Give the public a chance to comment before-
Meeting minutes, we can, can we hold those?
I'm the twenty, I'm all set with the twenty-first, just the fourth, the tenth, the twenty-third.
That's the only one I'm set for, I got to page fourteen out of twenty-one on, uh, April fourth and ran out of time.
Twenty-one page minutes?
Twenty-one page, yeah, April fourth, twenty-one pages, trust me.
So that means when I go to watch it on YouTube, it's going to be a long one.
I'm, I'm, uh, yes, and I, I've done some of the, it's all mechanical edits, but there was a lot of them.
All righty, thanks for the heads up on that one.
I'm doing the wordsmithing for you guys, I'll, I'll finish it up tomorrow and-
Chris, uh, any town administrator updates?
Just a few, um, Frank and I really want to thank Brittany for organizing and planning, uh, with both Congressman Auchincloss and Representative Vaughn's staff for the walk-around downtown we had today.
I thought that went really well.
It went really well, we have an earmark, um, that the congressman has put forward for us for, um, some infrastructure upgrades in the downtown, so it was really great to take him on a walk through those neighborhoods. And then we stopped into a couple of businesses, so thank you to Park Street Books, Zulo Gallery for hosting us today. And then a, a great event under the gazebo, so, uh, I thought it was a really, really nice event. It was nice to see such a great turnout, of course, we also had perfect weather, so I'd like to thank Brittany for planning that, since it's rained every event we've tried to do this summer. So it was just a really nice event, and I'm sure both, you know, all of you will talk about it more in your reports, but, uh, just thank you for her coordination on that, um, it was great. Uh, we are working with Mo on updating what the, uh, South Street construction schedule will be. Right now, it is planned for Thursday and Friday, but we are also anticipating rain, which could possibly move that to next week, uh, with the school opening. So stay tuned to our website, social media, uh, the chief and Mo are trying to work something out with Jeff as to how we're going to handle that.
So South Street will not be paved before school starts next Wednesday?
Unless, uh, unless it doesn't rain.
Oh, wow, okay.
So we're, yeah, um, and we apologize to everybody for the inconvenience. The reason why we were delayed a little over a week on this project was we held it for the Pan-Mass Challenge, and then we were faced with rain, so-
I was wondering why you did that, okay.
Whenever we try to accommodate one, we, you know, it's always something, so, uh, please stay tuned for, uh, for announcements on that. I would like to announce and thank Officer Flaherty, he will be retiring at the end of the month. It's been a pleasure to work with him, uh, I've, he's been here for the last twenty-five years while I've been, so it's definitely been a, a pleasure working with him and, uh, sad to see him go. And then I'm very excited to announce that we have the twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, twenty-two reports and the twenty twenty town reports in our office, if anybody would like to come in and get them. Twenty twenty-one, uh, is on its way, uh, but we do have those three years, if anybody, uh, would like to stop by, hang out with us for a little bit and pick them up. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, next meeting dates are set forth in the agenda, Select Board members' reports.
Uh, so, but actually, that's wrong, the October thirty-first is no longer a date, right?
Yes, we'll, we'll update on the calendar, we have, we went through and had to change a few of the dates based on, uh, a couple of issues, one being Bill and Halloween, so, uh, we have updated that, uh, and we will issue a, a new calendar shortly.
Okay.
Gus?
Uh, short, short report, this is summertime, uh, the only official thing that, well, the only official thing that I, I did was the MAPC, uh, project, taking a look at the rezoning or commercial development of the West Street, North Meadows Road area, that, that committee had their kickoff meeting back in July, I think the day after our last meeting. So it was a great meeting, a lot of exchange of information, I'm optimistic that, that this is going to be a good project to take a look at what the oppo, what some of the opportunities are. But the thing I'm hoping they come up with is, uh, it, it sounds like it's going to be less than a mere mechanical look at what land do you have that could be used for commercial development, that they're actually taking a look at all of the commercial property we have and considering what might be some of the best uses for that property, and what might be some things that we could try to do, maybe that we don't have anybody doing right now, that would be sort of new but appropriate ways to commercially develop some of that. So I'm looking forward to that effort, but we had the kickoff. As I think you guys know, I just got back from two-week vacation out to the Pacific Northwest. You all had crappy weather a good part of the time we were gone. We had wonderful weather for two solid weeks, except for some smoke coming in off the mountains in a couple places. So it was one of those times, every once in a while you go on a trip where you realize you got out of town before the bad weather moved in, and you went somewhere where there's really good weather. And in my entire career, that has tended, I've rarely gone somewhere where I left good weather here and went to crappy weather there, I don't know what it is, but I've been really lucky about that. And then the only other comment was, uh, we were, you were all probably commenting on it, but, uh, the visit by Jake Auchincloss today, uh, you know, is a rare-
know, as a representative of our town in, in the house, the thing that impresses me since he's been in office is, is efforts to make himself available, to schedule these hearings, it's distinctive in my experience, it's not that other reps have never done it at all, it's that he does it surprisingly frequently, and every time I've seen him, whether I agree with every single one of his policies or not, isn't the issue, it's that he's somebody who's accessible, I think he talks pretty straight when people ask him questions, he comes across like someone who's trying hard, so I thought it was a good, good session, and I appreciated, it was an enjoyable time to spend, and Marcus Vaughn as well for coming, but this was primarily...
I'd be remiss in pointing out, if he did not eat lunch with his staff at one of our blue ARPA picnic tables, I have a picture of it, if anybody would like to see it, so I love those tables.
Yep, that's it.
All right, so I did, I'll bring up the subject one more time, I did, Christine knew that I offered to actually walk the grounds at the state hospital with our contractor, so we did do that back on August 10, and there was some expectation some things would happen, so it is what it is, good guy, I just feel bad things haven't played out, sometimes you bite off more than you can chew, and I think that's what played out, but I do want to give a shout-out to Mo, because if you haven't been up to the state hospital, and I sent pictures to Christine, in the far back where the mural building is, if you're going, up until a few days ago, if you went, if you drove there, people were just cutting off and driving across the grass, because the ground, the road got so bumpy, and so Mo went in with his crew, and it's, they did a great job, because, you know, Trinity doesn't want to see people driving across the grass when there's roads provided there, so I do appreciate him following up, I think he did that on Friday afternoon, so, so, very much appreciate that, I too was wildly impressed with Congressman, he, so well-spoken, so knowledgeable, he, just the way he was able to handle the questions that were presented to him today, wildly impressed, it's the first time I've actually had a chance to be in his presence, so I, walking down Pleasant Street with him, seeing how he interacted at Park Street Books, just wildly impressed, and thankful that he represents our area, and that Marcus Vaughn goes unsaid, he's, he's approachable, he's been coming to a ton of events in Medfield, so we're lucky to have him, and I know Denise couldn't make it, but we have, Medfield's represented by some...
And she did send staff on her behalf, I apologize to not mention that she did send her staff as well, which was great, yes.
Very good, and then I did get an email from Penny, that she gave me a heads-up from the Medfield Energy Committee, that she's now the new chair, and that she's looking to have some face-to-face time, which I genuinely appreciate, so I think I'm meeting with her next Monday, the dog bylaw committee sent a letter out to, Christine, did it go to all of us, or her, Jill's email that had the letter, the recommendations as to where the dog committee group is looking to go, but definitely looking for insight from us and guidance from Mark?
It didn't go to us.
I'll make sure you have a copy of it, they are planning to have a public forum to talk about some of the ideas that they'll be recommending to you as we get to early September, late September, early October, and we'll start publicizing their public forum shortly, we wanted to hold it until September, when more people will be back in town, rather than hold it over the summer.
Okay, and then, I'll just acknowledge, if citizens are watching, I have received, as I believe all three of us have, various letters from residents on Evergreen, and so I just want to acknowledge that we have it, we've, I've responded to the ones, just to let them know that we are aware of it, but we will discuss later in September.
A future agenda topic in, in September, and I did offer, we had a couple people who did put in the comments tonight, they wanted to speak on it tonight, I explained it wasn't on the agenda, and I will notify the neighborhood as soon as it's on an agenda, and you're...
But the biggest question we got, I think everyone said, is, is the select board aware of it, so I just wanted to let them know that we are, and I appreciate any emails. And I think that is all I have.
So I would third the comments about our Congressman Jake Auchincloss, that the, every time I've, I've seen him, he's been very impressive, and, and he was, he was, received some very antagonistic comments, questions today, and he handled those very well, too, I've actually had office hours twice since we last met, because I missed my meeting last July, last July, last month, because I was tied up with a trial and couldn't make it, I met with someone who was running for the Democratic State Committee, that turned out to be very interesting, a lot of information and contacts about that Pulte development from residents, I did sit down, I went to an energy committee meeting, and also had a, a, a phone conference with Penny Connor that you talked about, her setting up, she and I connected yesterday afternoon and talked about, about what I thought about the energy committee and where they should be going, and then the MFI, Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund had a meeting, and that's it for me, anything else, Chris?
You need to close the public hearing for the solicitors who did not show this evening.
We'll, we'll close that, the public hearings then, at this point. So just note for the record that the second, whatever that applicant was, was a no-show. Our home remodeling did not show. Okay.
Just administratively, was there any good reason why they didn't just put all three names down on a single application, they all had duplicate applications, they're all from the same company, there were three applications, and it's like...
But they may be independent contractors, because that's what we found with Trinity Solar, that they, they're each...
Yeah, but they're, they're the same company, it's like...
Well, they are, but they're not, like, they're independent franchises, they don't, they're, they don't, they don't have to check with their other guys, so I think it's important that they actually do stand alone, if it's Lloyd Trinity Solar Works, that's, when I asked the young man who came to my house a few weeks ago, he's like...
Because their applications were exactly the same, they said, they wrote the, well, I mean, you're probably right, it's just that I read all three applications, they had the exact same question about all three applications, because each one said the exact same thing, it's like, why didn't you just put three names down with the same thing, it's...
They weren't the same height and weight.
Well, there's a provision in the form to put additional names.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.